Good afternoon. It's the Town of Greenwich Planning and Zoning Commission. And we are meeting virtually. It's 4:03 PM, Tuesday, March 15th. We have several changes to the agenda, two withdrawals, which is items four and five. Item four is Hilltop Farm Properties LLC for a final re-subdivision at 25 Lower Cross Road. And number five is the same. It's Hilltop Farm Properties LLC for a final site plan and special permit. Then we have three postponements. Those are items three, 12, and 13. Item number three is Mead Point LLC at Zero Indian Field Road for a site plan and special, final coastal site plan and special permit. And number 12 is GEH Properties LLC at 133 East Putt and 9 Strickland Road for a final coastal site plan and special permit. Number 13, Planning and Zoning Department, is a postponement of an amendment to our accessory housing regulation 699, and that is because we are giving time to West Cog to review the items. The first item on our agenda, oh, one more thing. Mr. Dennis Yesky is absent today, and Mr. Arn Wells will be seated for him. Mr. Wells will be seated for all the items this evening. The first item we have tonight is a decision item, which is a proposed stipulation of settlement at 53 Forest Avenue in Old Greenwich. And Katie, do you want to summarize it, or do you just want the commission to comment?
Yeah, I'll just quickly summarize it, that this was a proposal for an in-and-out driveway, where that had been one of the conditions that not to have a driveway back when it was approved originally. And so the applicant had come in and asked for a two-way driveway so that they could have their own entrance into into the office part of the combined use. And it was a split vote by the commission at the time, which is a de facto denial. And the applicant has worked with the commission to come in with a solution, and what they've proposed is a one-way in from Forest Avenue. And that would therefore reduce any impact of cars leaving that site and avoid the issue that was, I think, one of the original issues that had been discussed when the office building was constructed in the first place. So this is a settlement. There is an opportunity for discussion before the court. When it gets there, the judge will ask for any commentary at that time. So at this point, this is the proposal that staff is asking you to act on. The plans, if, in fact, if this gets approved, the plans would be reviewed by staff as opposed to coming back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, reviewed by staff prior to going to the zoning permit office and then the building permit office.
Any comments from the commission? Okay, hearing no comments from the commission, do I have any comments from the public? This is on the stipulation of settlement at 53 Forest LLC, 53 Forest Avenue in Old Greenwich. Does anybody from the public have any comments on this application? Okay, no comments from the public. And in that case, I believe we can close this matter, and we could have a motion, Mr. Mackry. Wait, you need to fix your microphone a little bit. Yeah. Oh, that's the tie. It's the non-St. Patrick's tie. See if he-
I am not Irish. Just say that.
Leroy is either, to tell you the truth.
We're all Irish, Nick.
Uh-huh, okay.
Oh, which plus Mr. Levy.
Oh, okay, hold on a second. You know what, Victoria? Why don't I just seat you for this since he's on the train, and he may fall out again, and we're doing a vote. So why don't I just seat you on the step?
Okay.
You don't literally mean fall out of the train. I mean, it's not what you meant.
Okay, sorry. Alrighty. Okay, so Nick, if you would go ahead, and I'm looking for Peter, but-
53 Forest Avenue, proposed stipulation of settlement between Planning and Zoning Commission of the Town of Greenwich and 53 Forest LLC, granting final site plan and special permit at 53 Forest Avenue, quotation office.
You just cut out, Nick.
Nick, you got word, yep.
Hold on a second. Is that better?
Yeah, that works. Yeah, well, it was working before till it stopped working.
Where was it? Motion to approve stipulation of settlement, noting the following. The project consists of site plan and special permit application to construct new curb cut and 15-foot-wide one-way driveway as substantially shown on Exhibit A, a concept drawing by Wesley South Associates, entitled Entry Drive Alternate Concept 1 dated June 7, 2021.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Low has seconded. Mr. Mackry, how do you vote?
Nay.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Was that aye? Okay. This is gonna be a long night, you guys. Ms. Goss?
In favor of the stipulation.
Perfect. So well said. Mr. Low?
Following the footsteps of Mr. Wells.
E, no, yes, aye. I thought we were doing the alphabet. I'm sorry, I got confused.
Albin is also aye. That would be four votes in favor with one vote against. And the motion has passed, and we go to our next item, which is St. Catherine of Siena and St. Agnes Parish Corporation for a final site plan to allow the use of 46 parking spaces, a supplemental parking for the J House Hotel. And I believe we have Mr. Levy is on his way back in. No, it's John T. Okay. Mr. Levy has fallen off the train, you guys. We're not seeing him here. And there he is. There's Mr. Levy.
Hi, sorry about that.
That's okay. We had to go ahead and vote without you, okay? Because we weren't sure when you were coming in. So we voted in favor of the step 4-1 on 53 Forest. And right now, you've frozen. So if you want to turn off your video, we'll just have you off as long as you're there. Yeah, because you're frozen. Okay. Mr. Tessie, if you would kindly go ahead.
Thank you. Chairman John Tessie, representing St. Catherine of Siena and St. Agnes Parish Corp., as you indicated. This application, as you know, was brought to you at a hearing on January 4th. I think during that hearing, which was very productive, at least in my mind, we discussed the, pretty much the obvious community need for supplemental parking assistance to both Tony's Restaurant and the hotel at 114 East Putnam Avenue, particularly during the evenings, and the availability of the parking on the eastern portion of the east parking lot owned by, I'll just call it the church. The proposal was one that this commission deemed needing a variance of Section 6158 of the Building Zone Regulations, as reported by staff and also by Mr. Couture. We were able to secure the variance, which basically a use variance, by the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals unanimously, making the same arguments, if you will, of logic that we've discussed with the commission members at our January 4th meeting. It is an appropriate time to try to wrap this up. Hopefully, we can positively with you this evening as we're coming into the dining season. And we're dealing with a situation of a facility that is substantially underparked as a matter of current zoning regulations. Nothing happened in the meantime, other than the regulations getting stricter for the right reasons. But it's interesting, as strict as our regulations are for dining, when you have a really popular restaurant, there's never enough parking, as we all know. So here, what we're proposing to do is to have a flexible situation. What I mean by flexible is that we're proposing to allow for the eastern, for eastern most 46 parking spaces on the 220-some-odd parking lot, space parking lot, to be dedicated to employee parking in customer valet parking directly from one site to the other of the hotel and the restaurant, preempted by any, at any time, by the St. Catherine's Church, because that's the church facility there, or really any of his other tenants, whether St. Catherine's Church advises the hotel and the restaurant that they need the spaces, they would be made available, again, on a preemptive basis, to the utilization of the, basically the facilities that are on the, I'll call it the western campus, if you will, of St. Catherine's, where we have the church, the school. Principally the church and the school are their principal tenants, as you know. There are other activities going on at that site, but they're not really the issue. So that, those business terms have been agreed to by the parties. They're logical, most probably. What we're really talking about is the, I don't remember if it's still a week, I guess it's not a week long, but the St. Catherine's feast, Christmas and heathen, I make a joke because I'm probably one of them, Christmas and Easter, when all those heathens decide to show up at church.
It's the resurrection and the incarnation.
There you go. Sounds much better. I want to witness that, but-
The church, the cult of the resurrection and the incarnation is how you're known.
Right. So we, but it could be other times. It could be a popular person.
Yep.
Won't be me, because it'd be a popular person who has to have a, for which there's a funeral mass. And there could be itinerary at other times, but the agreement is the church knows its business, if you will. They have a facilities manager. They have coordination. So if there are other times when the use is needed to be preempted, it will be. There's a working relationship. There was already, in the sense that for, during the Christmas time, there was some accommodation given. So we think with the blessing of the commission, but right now, we can move forward here. I believe that the plans we submitted to you weren't the best. I don't really know why. It's probably my lack of coordination. But what I would propose is that we submit a final plan that delineates that, you know, it's going to be a line, basically going to be very simply a north-south line that's going to delineate the 46 spaces on the east and the balance of the spaces. But it's blurred in a sense that, as I said earlier, the preemption right with the St. Catherine's Church utilization will always be there. Certainly, we expect that to be a condition. We're happy to have that as actually a condition of your approval. So it's crystal clear, if I may be so bold as to suggest you do approve it.
Mr. Tessie, before we move on, I think I-
Your sound, Nick.
We had two significant issues yesterday. One was that the parking plan-
Nope, you went out again, Nick.
The parking plan that's provided doesn't reflect what's out there at all.
Well, the part, Mr. DeAngelo, let me just interject. We asked Mr. Plant, I believe there is a plan. I don't know why it's there. There's another plan, but we asked him to do it as-built of that area, and I actually have the as-built. I don't understand how it did make-
I have the site plan that shows J House, and I have the, a partial of the adjacent parking lot.
Yes.
But I don't have a full of the adjacent parking lot. That was one of the things we were struggling with.
Well, we do have, you have it. I gave you an old one, and Mr. DeAngelo updated. I really don't know. So I think why it was that the actual plan itself, the as-built plan, was not submitted to you previously. I really don't know. But we will submit that, and we will delineate with a, you know, have Mr. DeAngelo put a very firm line in there that delineates that eastern 46 some odd. I mean, it doesn't matter whether it's 46, 44, 50. It's in, you know, we have to pick a number, 46. Back when, when I was submitted, when I submitted the original plan, which did not reflect, as you pointed out in January, by the way, did not affect, was not reflected of current conditions. We now have one of current conditions. We will submit it to you as a condition of approval, again, I hope, and we'll delineate it. It's not-
Okay. Mr. Leroy, if you can zoom in, can zoom in on the breach of the fence. And this is the other issue, is that my recollection of the last time we talked about this, this was basically a gate through the fence. So the staff could actually have a way to get from one parking lot to the other.
Yes.
I was, it was my little surprise here that I'm actually looking at a driveway from one parking lot to the other.
Well, that's, Mr. DeAngelo and I talked about whether that should be large enough for two-way or one-way, and I thought it was a waste of parking to put two of us. I was wrong. That was my idea. If you want us to double it up so there's enough room for an in-and-out, we'll double it.
No, we were, no, no, no. We were thinking it was a footpath.
Oh, no, no.
No, it was described to us as a footpath.
Oh, I never described it as a footpath.
We used the word path. I'm pretty sure that we all walked away with that impression, Mr. Tessie, but go ahead.
No, my feeling was, and I actually said, well, then there was a miscommunication, because the whole, one of the whole points, lack of a better word, beauty of this, and we thought was that we will be staying off the public street by doing this. And that East Putnam Avenue, I can tell you, well, we all know, I'll tell you, we all live here. It's pretty congested. And Tony's is actually a pretty busy place. So I think, I thought it was, naive of me, safer and more appropriate to cut through. In fact, we talked about that, because I remember, I think it was you, Mr. Mackry, talked about the elevations needed to be worked on a bit, so we can show the elevation. So I never thought it was a footpath we talked about. Be that as it may, I think we're much better off, from a safety standpoint, to have a interconnection. We lose a couple of parking spaces on either side.
Okay, let's start, let's stop right there. Okay, so assume we're going to make this a driveway. Okay, just an assumption. Then the plan that I'm looking at, the one that Mr. Leroy has up in front of us, shows us that there's a bunch of parking spaces we're going to have to get rid of.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so getting back to our original thing, what we're looking at really isn't indicative of what's actually, what you're seeking. You're actually removing parking. You're going to have to move it around, and they readjust for what's happening with this driveway. Now, if I understand correctly, you can actually drive all the way around the building. Or you can drive in one entrance, around the back of the building, and wind up in the parking lot at the front door. How do you go backwards? So I-
I don't go backwards. Everything here, yeah, I can explain it to you. So I- Let me explain it to you, just to make sure we're on the same page here. All the parking, I mean, put aside employees, because they come in before, you know, they come in when you're not having business, doing business. But all the parking, all the valet, is done underneath the canopy, and that's a one-way. And that's one way going clockwise around the building, left to right. That's one way. That's not two ways. That's one way. And so they go down, they go around, and then they fill up, right now, with the valet, that western parking lot. And then the valets, well, that fills up pretty quickly, would then go on, do, in fact, come on East Putnam Avenue, and they circle back around when they bring the cars for the patrons to take off. But the beauty of this, doing it this way, is also that you're dealing with a right-hand turn. You're not dealing with, you know, you're dealing with a right-hand turn. So that clockwise program works very well. So too, we thought the program, I thought the program would work well, because those cars would come in, go around the building, with the other area filled up, they'll make that left-hand turn to those 46 some odd parking spaces on the easternmost area of the St. Catherine's parking lot. And when then, so they drive right in, not going to the public street, go out, they come back in, and then they can come back. I'm pointing as if you could see me.
Okay, so I dropped my car at the front door.
Yeah.
The valet takes it, and it goes out onto the street, around to the back-
That's not the street. That's not the street.
But that's one way right there, isn't it?
Yeah, it's, yeah, but it's one way, but it's on the site.
Mr. Mackry, it's a counterclock, excuse me, clockwise motion once you go to the valet. So this road here goes around-
Yeah, that's what I was trying to show you with my finger, but I wasn't doing a good job.
Okay, so it's, it's that, the back road is one way down into the lower lot?
Correct.
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 Okay, I thought it was actually one way from the lower lot up.
No, no.
That's a good question, though.
I'm glad we clarified that. That's why I'm saying, yeah. But Pat showed it correctly, yes. And so the beauty of all of this was that we're staying on site. Yes, we have to go onto the public street, but if it's for a couple hundred feet, and it's a right-hand turn only, so there's less conflict with traffic, just a much safer program. When they were valeting, you know, if you remember a few years ago, when we originally had the outdoor dining, one of the plants had, were valeting up at the old, some of the traffic up over to the old State Treasures site. And that's tough. Anytime you go off the street, and you go in any direction, you know, you're going to be fighting traffic, because you're involving both lanes, having to cross lanes. The beauty of this whole program is, we've eliminated parking, which, you know, parking on residential streets. We've eliminated some issues with commercial tenants who don't like our customers parking there. And we're putting it in a situation where we have that rotational clockwise program that only involves a right-hand turn coming in and out for only a couple hundred feet. So it's just so much safer. I thought, you know, but I had to explain it to you, because I obviously were-
So I mean, Mr. Tessie, basically, if you're a patron of the hotel, you won't have any idea of what's, there's been no change whatsoever, because there's no change in the types of use at the hotel, and most people valet anyway.
Yeah, that's right. There's very, most of those, very good. Most of those spaces up on top are, and there are some during the day, you know, they don't have a valet all the time, and you get your hotel guests usually wind up filling up most of those before the valets get there.
Yeah, and so where you had valet, just sort of on the right-hand side of the screen, and it would get tight in there. So to avoid that and create a safer condition, you're proposing to valet the cars into the neighboring parking lot.
Yeah, but being in both, yeah, you're absolutely right, Katie. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. So, but for the, it's so that you create a safer condition on sites. And then the question becomes just ensuring that you're not taking up any of the parking spaces on the other property at the times that they need them.
Yeah, which is absolutely in agreement with them. It could be a condition with you, and we get it. It's just so better.
Just to stop you for a second, Mr. Tessie, I just went back and looked at the January 4th. And yes, you're right, the word "drive" is in there, but one, two things that struck me. The first thing is, the staff report for January 4th says that the town planner had been asking for site plans for some time, even before the 4th of January, and I think Katie can comment on that. But the second thing is, the notice that you issued says an access drive will connect the parking lots, and that will be the only means for the J House employees to enter the area of the St. Catherine's lot. It doesn't indicate to me here that that would be a two-way.
Well, it's supposed to be a two-way, because you, but-
Well, you haven't written it that way.
No, no, let's be clear. I, wait a minute. Let's just get back here.
I mean, that was Chris Bristol who wrote it, so you could discuss it with-
No, I'm not going to blame any, no, it's not a matter of blame. We certainly represented that we were going to do just what I said a few moments ago, is keep it all on campus. In fact, we agree with the, he's actually in the agreement with St. Catherine's, that we're not going to go out onto Riverside Avenue, that this is all going to be controlled by that connection, so it's all isolated, for all the reasons I articulated earlier.
No, it's a great idea, and don't, I'm not faulting you. I love the idea. I know I'm interrupting you. I think it's a great idea to get traffic off the road. It's safer, all that. But the fact that we've been discussing this configuration without having a current survey, an accurate survey, and that as far back as January, the town planner had already been asking you that you submit a site plan, and that you have the appropriate parking spaces shown, and that we're still asking you about it, is not, it's confounding, honestly, how long we've been working on this without getting the appropriate documentation.
The funny thing is, again, I have the survey, and Mr. DeAngelo did. It did take a while to get it. You know, all the engineers are busy, but I'm not going to throw Tony under the bus.
No, no, don't throw him under the bus.
I'll take, I'll take, you know, the responsibility for that. I'm saying, if you look way back when, I provided a, what we had, which is not an as-built, it was an old survey for the parking lot. It's not, it doesn't change particularly.
It's what we're looking for, Mr. Tessie. That's certain.
No, you keep, don't turn your head, Mr. Mackry, unless you move the mic with, there you go.
It's the whole parking lot, the whole St. Catherine's parking lot. You know, it doesn't reflect what's out there at all. So I think an update of that-
It's fine. Actually, Mr. DeAngelo did it. I agree with you. I agree 100%.
In conjunction with that, I think actually the work that, the current work that shows this ramp between the two. Okay, yes, there's a ramp there. It's 12-foot wide. But I have parking spaces that obstruct it. I have all kinds of crazy stuff. I think that needs to be sussed out to make sure. You know, what happens to those three spaces? I'm going to lose on one side, and how do the spaces on the other side get moved around so you can put it into the adjacent parking lot?
We're going to lose a few spaces, so it doesn't really, I mean, we're picking up 46. We can, we'll-
I lose three on one side and pick up 46. Where's the wash?
Okay, so- It's more than a wash, right?
Yeah.
It's a whole laundry.
Okay. So I think what we had discussed was, we'd like to, before we move or hide, and talk about this even more, is get the right information in front of us. We understand, yes, you resolve the safety in the streets. We all appreciate that part. But I want to make sure I have something in the file that says, this is what we're looking at. This is what we're requesting specifically, so I know at the end, in the file, 10 years from now, I can come back and I have it here with me.
Well, my suggestion would be, but it's up to you, that, make that a condition, that we get the staff. We submitted to staff prior to, prior to use. They show it to you, and make sure it's all signed off, because it's actually, it's actually ready to go. The only issue I really, not an issue, just a question, because it was my idea. I thought that one, because we're only going to deal with valet and employees, the 12-foot drive made a lot of sense, saved a couple parking spaces, and we really didn't need a bigger connection than that. Somebody feels that we should make it two-way, we'll make it two-way.
I understand that, and I think maybe just a tip on that would be just to say that it's actually, you know, employee use only. That way, you know, people are driving back and forth.
Oh, 100%. It's only valet, that's the agreement. But the Board of Appeals actually made that a condition, because we said we were happy to have it as a condition with you. It's only employees that will drive their cars, or valeted customer cars. Absolutely.
So understanding that, I would appreciate having the updates of the surveys. So I have something, so in 15 years from now, when I'm actually looking at this again, I know what I had here today.
Are you saying you want to hold this open?
Well, I guess, actually, what is it? We would have to convert to a preliminary, because we're at the end of this.
Well, I'm saying, there's no reason to hold it open. I think staff, this is many times that a final plan is submitted to staff, and it's reviewed prior to any other action. It's not like, it's, I mean, it's an area back there. You've all seen it. It's a question of having the right configuration of the parking lot, which actually, quite frankly, St. Catherine's wanted to.
Excuse me, Mr. Tessie, let me ask staff, because there's two issues here. One is that we've been asking for this for months. If you go back and you look- I, I, because there's two issues here. One is that we've been asking for this for months. If you go back and you look at the minutes at the at everything that was on the record in January, we said all the same things that we needed the final plan.
I don't disagree. I, I'm not sure what happened.
Katie Patrick. Okay, Katie Patrick, I hate to put it on you guys when we don't have an accurate survey. And that's pointed out to us in the staff report. If you guys are comfortable with reviewing the final layout of the parking, looking at the access road, um, or would you rather, because this is really one of those situations where we may get staff into a corner, having to review something that is potentially not consistent. So your call on how comfortable you are with us referring you to this to you.
Yeah, I think, I think it's fine. The, what makes it way easier is if you're just very specific about what it is that you want changed or noted on the plan, uh, because this is, this is, uh, like, for example, when during the year this is permitted, the hours that it's permitted. Um, you know, the, the conditions when it is permitted, meaning like not when there's the services and those other things that Mr. Tessie mentioned. Um, those kinds of things are are very helpful. So that, you know, so that when staff reviews it, they have kind of a little checklist, so to speak, to, to ensure that it's compliant.
I think that that plan is only gonna, the plan, I think, Mr. Macri is just referring to, in, in in Zolvan's referring to just the plan itself. I think the rest of it's gonna be handled by the conditions. Basically reiterating the Board of Appeals and any, your conditions. Um, as they said, I would add that, uh, specifically the condition that, uh, the use shall be preempted at any time by St. Mary's, uh.
Well, you already have that.
All Saints.
St. Catherine's, but you already have that in the permission that they're giving you to use the lot.
Absolutely, but if you felt more comfortable.
No, I mean, because they're the ones who are gonna throw you out. We can condition it, but they're gonna throw you out if you're in their way.
Like, like, I, I think as far as Katie, Katie, I think what they're just asking, whether you're comfortable looking at the site plan to make the determination, and I think the parameters are going to be, you know, forty six parkings, you know, forty six parking spaces less those lost. Uh, let, less, or we could say forty eight less, that, you know, St. Catherine's is liberal. I picked forty six at the time, quite frankly, because the old map, when I drew the line, had forty six. So we can say some number between forty five and fifty. That would be fine with us, too.
We have, we have to make the determination of how many spaces. That's up to us.
What did you say, Nick? Your mic cut out again.
Uh, we have to make the, we have to do, make the agreement on how many spaces. That's up to us.
No, it's not up to you. If you wanted to put a cap, I, I'm happy with the forty six. I'm saying forty six cap, you had mentioned rightfully so, we'd lose some, we'd lose three or two or three parking spaces. So I didn't know how, how deep a dive you wanted to take on, on the net number. That's why I mentioned that.
Well, what's your agreement with St. Catherine's? How many parking spaces are they allocating to you?
He had agreed it would be, it would be, uh, no more than fifty. And when I drew up, uh, Mr. Wells, the original line based on, turned out to be an older survey, it came out to forty six, where it was a natural break. That's how that happened.
Well, maybe we just say no more than fifty, because it'd be nice to marry it with your agreement with, with St. Catherine's. I think as opposed to holding you to a specific number, because right now you won't know, you're not exactly sure how wide that driveway is gonna be. But I could live with, you know, no more than fifty, because that's what you agreed with, with St. Catherine's.
Uh, what, what did you mean, Mr. Tessie, about a natural break? Is that, are you talking about geographically or the space?
Uh, well, there's original spacings. If you go back to my original submission, you'll see there was a, there was, there was a, uh, uh, an aisle, and it was an aisle break. And, and so when you looked at the east side and figured the aisle, where this aisle was.
I understand. That's what I thought you meant. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, right. It seemed logical enough for me, but I like Mr. Wells' suggestion if the rest of you do.
Um, if Kitty, if staff is comfortable, if the town planner is comfortable that they can work with the information after the fact, uh, we could go ahead and decide this matter tonight and condition it. I, I, well, we can talk it as to the, as to the actual. I believe that where we're coming out is that it's two way. I had one other question for you, Mr. Tessie, just to make sure. We're assuming that nobody else is gonna just drive zippity do. Um, during off hours, will it be changed?
It has to be changed because during off hours, there's plenty of parking.
Okay, that's a good point. Okay, all right.
And the employees will be going in, out, off hours, if you're there, is.
Okay, so, um, any, any more questions from the commission on this? Any comments?
I, I think actually, is staff okay with that?
Well, question, I mean, is there gonna be signage like on something near there that says, you know, no access for the public or something like that?
Happy to put signs, a good point. We can put it, we can put a sign, we can put it, we'll put signage at that location.
Yeah, no public throughway or something like that, staff only.
Yeah.
I like staff, I like staff only. But the question, uh, Margaret brought up, um, the idea of doing two spaces. You know, it's interesting now, I think about it, to do that double wide, that's like almost more, um, enticing for people to drive through. I don't think we need the double wide.
I think it should be single. I really do. That's my.
Oh, okay, we're on the same page, on the same page.
I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with the double, and that's why I was even, and that's why I looked up the thing about it being access only. I'm really uncomfortable. First of all, you're adding a lot of unnecessary paving.
I agree a hundred percent.
And second, you're making it, um, you're making it very, I mean, second, and you're tempting people.
I agree, we're, we're a hundred percent on the same page.
You would also assume, correct me if I'm wrong, but you assumed that for the most part, people are all kind of going in at one point and then they, they'll all generally be leaving, like with it, you know, obviously, there's gonna be some crossover where people will be dropping off cars and then also trying to retrieve the cars.
Yeah, but working with staff, we don't have, it's not like it's a stream, you know.
Right, exactly.
Not a stream. It's not a thoroughfare in any respect.
Well, Mr. Tessie, um, for those, uh, people, uh, who are parking in the regular lot, the existing lot, not, not the non-St. Catherine's lot, uh, right now, would, would they seek to exit through, uh, the St. Catherine's area?
The only people who really park, they, they don't really have, uh, less people sneak, sneak on by, so to speak. That, but that parking lot is, has been valet or employee. That's really a lot of employee parking, which, you know, but when you get really busy, they don't want the employees to park there, but there's no way anybody would want to take that, go in that parking lot. Um, because it, the answer is they don't have, they don't have their cars, you know, they're, they're gonna, they're valeted there. And I think there is some illogic that anybody would wanna go through St. Catherine's, because where are they going? I guess.
Well, yeah, I, I don't, I don't know. I just, I, I forgot what the logistics are. But, uh, if, if for some reason something got backed up and they couldn't exit where the normal exit is, would, you know, could they get out that way?
They, the people that pick up their cars stay on, stay on top and they rotate and they go out, because that's an in and out on that, that, that eastern driveway where you have the, uh, the pork hole share for the, uh, for the, well, Kitty knows it well, certainly, and, um, I'm sure a lot of you do. So that's, that's, that's an in and out. Um, they, that's in and out up on top. They don't, they don't go back, so they'll never get close to the, to the, uh, uh, St. Catherine's. And, uh, just, you know, I think an added degree of safety was a great idea on Katie's part, which is we'll put sta- staff only sign. I think that's, let you come up with a, your pact, I mean, a better idea. I like the staff only that you suggested. Sign down there, just in case, but my experience there is, um, very few customers drive that, drive through that back area and go out that way anyway.
I think I've been there once and I did drive down on the east side and down the road. I didn't even know it existed, so, um, I was quite surprised. So that's, I'm sort of dealing with some ignorance here, so I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, you could have, but also, as you know, back there for safety reasons, they've got some rooms in the back, the pool is back there, people go back and forth. They really don't like customers driving back there. They really wanna control it.
Yeah, I, I didn't know I wasn't allowed, so I just went ahead. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
And Mr. Tessie.
Yes.
I just want to ask you about the placement of the, this proposed ramp driveway. Um, you're losing two spaces. I guess four spaces, right? You're losing four spaces if you're just looking at the plan.
Two on each side, you know, I asked, Mr. DeAngelo chose the spot. Um.
Um, I, I was just wondering. Um, not that it would change that aspect of it, but if you went toward the corner, if that's a kind of a, a better location for, for turning in and out of the lot as opposed to having ninety returns, so you could go directly through, if you know, when you're coming down in, uh, uh, to the, if the top of the page is north, you'll go down, going north and south. Uh, uh, um, on the far lane, you'd go straight through.
Yes. I don't think you go straight through. If we get closer to that property line, there's actually a plant, one of the few, there's actually a planting strip there. We wouldn't wanna touch that. And if you look, the pavement, that's where the pavement is the closest, and I think that's why Tony chose it.
Oh, okay. I was just curious.
It just limits, limits the amount of green area lost. There's a slight amount, but, but that's why I think he, I think, I think that's why he chose it. That, that's just seem to be the, uh, the, the most, uh, logical area given, given, uh, what we have to work with there.
And, and the, these fifty spaces, are they, are they kind of like, is there an area that you're designating for the fifty spaces, up to fifty spaces or not really, just kind of?
No, it's gonna be, it's, if you looked at the original plan I submitted, it, it's basically a line that we're gonna draw, that's, it's going to be east, west, um, I'm sorry, nor, uh, north, south. And it's going to, uh, involve the easternmost fifties. It'll be in a block. It won't be itinerate. We all agreed with, with St. St. Mary's, St. Catherine's, that it would be a block in that area. Um, on the, on the far, so it's a farther, I guess, way, way to describe it is the easternmost fifty or less parking spaces.
What I like about the idea of, of having, uh, an access way closer to the corner of uh, St. Catherine's property is that it does, but would be right next to this island so that you're kind of, you're not, you know, it's, it's a little bit more buffered, the in and out. And you have that corner space, which could kind of also buffer, um, you know, the, your the, um, uh, uh, the, the traffic, as opposed to having, um, spaces, you know, have cars on either side as you're moving through both properties. Uh, that was kind of my idea. But anyway, uh, whatever works is fine.
Yeah, I'll ask Tony to take a look at that. I think he.
But you know what I mean? It's as opposed to, it's only, you know, one car either way.
You gotta be careful. You got, you got, you can't, I'm not sure what we're all talking about. You can't make it that close to the left that side, which is the easternmost side, because then you're gonna run into, you're gonna lose more parking spaces that are parked perpendicular. You've got to get to the point where you get beyond the parking spaces on, on the, uh, on the St. Catherine's property there, on that east side. You've got to get to an open area or you're gonna, you could affect, you know, parking spaces that are both uh, parallel and that are, uh, perpendicular. I'll ask Tony to look at it and if he.
I'm just curious, this time, I understand. All right.
That's a problem, another problem, getting that close. Okay.
Uh, Mr. Tessie, one, one final question. Uh, now, we're talking about a driveway that really is like wide enough for one car. Uh, I just wonder if we should make it one way. Maybe that's what we're thinking about, but I'm thinking about, you know, it's twelve thirty. Tony's is closing down, people in a rush and, uh, somebody's dropping a car off and somebody's coming the other way. I mean, should the flow be, you, you, uh, when they pick up the car on the St. Catherine's side, should they go to Riverside Avenue and then?
No, we, we agree with St. St. Catherine's, we wouldn't do that and we said.
Okay, okay, okay.
But I understand what you're saying, but the truth of the matter is when they, when they make that parking area for, look, that valet over the, in the existing property, there's only one lane, because they stack, that's what happens when they stack, there's only one lane left. And they work around it. So that's what happens with the valet. So they should be used to dealing with one way. When, you know, when traffic.
I just worry about, you know, two cars coming together.
Yeah, but they're not speeding. I hope they're not speeding. Maybe, maybe it's a Ferrari.
Yeah.
I don't know, but.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, folks, so, um, we're questioned out. Uh, the public had no comment, and we could then, are you agreeable to closing this item at this time and deciding it?
Yes, we can do that.
Alrighty, so if there are no objections to closing, does anybody object? Let me just check. All right, um, we will then close and decide this item. This item is closed and before we make a decision, um, and just just be, being clear on the conditions, uh, the signage.
Yes.
The St. Catherine's need overrides at all times. The one way, um, the drive to be, and I think we should specify the width of the drive or at least just say it be one lane only. Um, we, I always would like to ask them if there's anything, um, if I don't remember from the site plan, is there any room to do anything with any green area? Any screening, anything?
That's it. I think it's, they're, they're supposed to be coming through a hedge. And they've kind of got the driveway. I, I, I'm seeing at least three spaces on both sides that it would be omitted. And, you know, that'd be kind of just a generous to get in and out of the driveway on both sides. I'm not seeing green area other than the stuff that they're trying to remove.
So any parking spaces, so any parking spaces that are lost that can be infilled with green, we should, we should infill with green.
Yep, that's exactly right.
Okay.
Infill with green. Thank you for putting it so concisely. Okay, anybody else, before we go into decision mode, what conditions? Um, the number of spaces, on, what was your suggestion again?
Just up to, uh, uh, up to fifty spaces, which is what agreed with, uh, no more than fifty spaces, which is what they agreed with St. Catherine's.
Okay. Anybody got anything else for Nick? Alrighty, my friend, you're on.
Okay, this is, uh, thirteen seventeen Riverside Avenue, PLPC, twenty twenty one, uh, four eight six. Uh, request of use of parking spaces to provide vehicles from the J House Hotel and restaurant employees and guests, uh, on the eastern rear portion of the parking lot at thirteen seventeen Riverside Avenue. Uh, so motion to approve the application noting the following. Uh, as to be provided for staff prior to zoning permit, uh, revised parking, uh, plan, and this is drawing, let me double check. Uh, one of one, it's the construction plan by, uh, the DeAndrea office, um, prepared for one one four J H LLC, uh, is to be updated with the ramp um, and the removed parking spaces, uh, and indicate any adjacent areas to the ramp uh, that are left over to be green space. Um, the.
You broke up, stop, there you go. Don't turn head, that's the trick.
Okay, the existing conditions mapped by the DeAndrea office. Um, dated September twenty fourth nineteen ninety shall be updated as well to reflect the current conditions and the new ramp. Um, uh, on both plans, uh, the conditions of use, the hours, et cetera, shall be noted. Uh, the ZBA file number and conditions, uh, shall be noted. Uh, the indication on both plans of the number and location uh, of spaces to be used. Uh, there shall be no more than fifty spaces to be used. Uh, the driveway is to be two, two-way at twelve-foot wide with signage at both end, uh, drive, uh, driveway for staff use only.
Did you say two-way or one-way?
It's two-way at twelve-foot wide.
Oh, okay. Got it, got it, got it, I got you, I got you.
Right, staff can go north and south.
Yeah, I got you.
Well, eh, we had talked about, uh, was it St. Catherine's, can we revoke it anytime? Did I get that right?
Yes.
Pre- preempt.
And revoke, actually.
Oh yeah, they could revoke.
Preempt use at any time. Uh, conditions, uh, signs. Two plans, ZBA, location and number. Two-way traffic, preempt use, and the infill with green. Okay, anything else from anybody else? I think that covers it.
I think that covers it.
Staff review prior to zoning permit, right?
Yes, and the staff is gonna, is gonna sign off. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Mr. Low?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
And Albin is also aye, and with that, the motion passes five-nothing, and we are ready to rock and roll. And we are in the public hearing, do we have our friend, Mr. Basili around?
Thank you all, see you later.
Mr. Basili, oh, yep, there he goes. Just as I was gonna ask him to raise his hand. Uh, trying again, there he is. All right. And Mr. Basili, if you would just unmute for a second and let us hear you?
Yes.
All right, that's all, we just, okay, great, just wanted to make sure you were all set. All right, and with that, we go to the public hearing, our first item on the public hearing is Christopher M. and Francesca J. Santamarro at forty-six Vineyard Lane to construct a pool house, a pool and pool house, uh, which will ex, further exceed a hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet, it's a final site plan and special permit.
Good evening, Madam Chair, uh, members of the commission, for the record, Tom Hegney on behalf of the applicant. Uh, as you indicated, this is just for a pool and pool house, we're over the hundred and fifty thousand cubic feet. So although we're only adding a hundred and ninety-five square feet, uh, this requires a special permit. Uh, listening to the comments at the briefing session yesterday, I want to focus on the landscape plan, the tree removal, and the rain garden. Uh, we will provide a landscape plan, uh, uh, the Santamarros have been working with their landscape designer on it. Uh, and, uh, uh, can develop it beyond what we have on the screen right now. Uh, we will replace the, the two trees, two to one, uh, that are being removed, that are shown on the plan here with the Xs. Uh, those are the only two trees that would be removed as part of this. Uh, and will provide a, uh.
And you said you were replacing them, uh, and that you would give us, yeah, and you said you would replace them?
Yes, yes, two for one.
Okay.
Uh, and that we would plant the, uh, the rain garden, uh, just as they've planted the rain garden on the easterly portion of their property, northeasterly portion of the property, which is done with, uh, uh, shrubs and other, uh, plants. I, there were a couple of things on the, uh, uh, conservation, uh, comments, uh, that I did want to go over, because oftentimes, the, uh, motion to approve indicates, uh, uh, to address all departmental comments, and there are two here that I think are, are really not appropriate. Uh, most of them are taken care of by the, uh, comments that are in the staff report. But two are that the, uh, that the patio around the pool is excessive for use and impervious should be reduced, or permeable terrace considered. Uh, we do have a rain garden, uh, that treats, uh, all of the runoff from the pool area uh, and the, the pool house itself, uh, which probably treats it better than if it just had, uh, permeable pavement uh, or, uh, pavers. So we would not want to, uh, have that as a condition. I would add that, uh, we have ninety-two percent green space on the site. Uh, and eighty-four percent is, uh, is required, so we're, we're well over the, the green space requirement, and I would think that, uh, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Santamarro can have a, a patio around their pool the size that's proposed. Uh, the second was, uh, and this is part of their number six. It is recommended that a robust planting plan containing at least thirty percent native species is provided to balance the paved area, again, referring to the, uh, uh, the patio, then the restoration should cover the square footage equal to the area of the pool house and fifty percent of the pool terrace. And, uh, uh, th- th- this is, uh, a, a six-acre site, two acres on, as I said, it's, it's eighty-eight percent, or ninety-two percent, uh, uh, green space already. Uh, I would think that the landscape plan that the staff is recommending is, uh, can, of, uh, comment five, oh, would address this rather than, uh, having something specific like this, uh, which really isn't in any regulation anywhere. Just trying to get it a little bit more specific.
I'm not following you.
There, there's no regulation that says that you have to, uh, restore the uh, coverage of the pool house and fifty percent of the pool terrace elsewhere on a site, when you have ninety-two percent green space to begin with.
No, we're asking people, there is no regulation that says that, and, um, we are asking people to give back as much, to recreate as much as they are will, as they can. Uh, because we're still working, as you know, our long-term project of the landscape regulations. So for now, we are just asking people if you would consider it, and I believe that Conservation was thinking likewise. Katie, did you want to say something?
Yeah, it would be actually very helpful, um, to that end, that, that the chairman was just talking about, to understand what the thought process is, one way or another, from an applicant, so that would help us craft, um, craft the regulation moving forward, like what the decision-making process is.
Thank you, great question, so, so, Mr. Hegney, we're struggling with the minimum standards we would set on development. Uh, because our, our topography is so widely varied that if we say to somebody, you gotta do X, we keep finding properties that would never be able to comply, and we say, well, that's not fair to ask these folks, so tell us what you think.
Uh, when you adopted the green space requirement of ten, twelve years ago now, um, you actually conducted a study as to what would be the appropriate percentages in each of the zones. And I think since that was adopted, I have had three variances with very specific instances, uh, where we had to apply, uh, to vary the, uh, the green space requirement, so I think you ha- have right now, a very effective regulation, uh, that in, in this particular zone requires eighty-four percent of the lot to be green space. Uh, and to start getting into the nitty-gritty of, well, your patio is three thousand square feet, and uh, we want you to take fifty percent of that and, and, you know, plant somewhere else, the, the rest of the site's all green already. So I'm not sure quite what we're restoring. Uh, a, a, a couple of acres of it is, is wetlands, so uh, there's no development going on there at all, so I'm not sure how you, how, how you do that kind of development, uh, or that, I, I don't, I don't think restoration is the right term, when you already have the rest of the, the site as, as green space.
So, we're, we've kind of reaching a similar conclusion in many ways, I'm just, you know, playing, you know, opening our cards here. Is, we're thinking that we have to set some minimum standards for the landscape type, I know that they exist now, but people aren't adhering to them as closely as we'd like, and they are not as, as textured as we'd like to see them, so, uh, we're thinking in terms of minimum standards for what is planted and how it behaves, and also for, um, the amount of top, of, of manipulation of the site.
Well, I, I think a couple of things, you could have a, an example of how a rain garden should be planted, uh, with, uh, with shrubs, so people don't think it's just going to be this eyesore in their property, where it can be made very attractive. Uh, same with, uh, uh, replacement plantings of, uh, similar kind and requiring native species, uh, which is something that the commission and, and Conservation have been, uh, recommending and, and suggesting. So I, I think things like that certainly could be added, so that you know, uh, going in, what kinds of appropriate, uh, uh, plantings, uh, can be included in the, uh, in the site plan.
Okay.
Uh, the other, yeah, the other thing I would point is what, what, the, the checklist for site plans and special permits, I, unless it's been amended recently, does not include a landscape plan. And so I get this question, that, well, it, it doesn't say I have to have a landscape plan, and I tell people, if you don't have a landscape plan, you don't get very far, so do a landscape plan.
Your prayers have been heard. You are getting, you're very, you will end up with your very own landscape checklist.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Mr. McRae, you were gonna say?
Um, so, we're, you're gonna replace the two trees that are, uh, under the, uh, pool house?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, Conservation was looking for plantings in the rain garden.
Correct, and.
Okay, I'm looking at the site development plan, and I'm not too sure I see a new rain garden.
Uh, there, there is currently a rain garden over near the driveway.
I see that one.
Off of Vineyard Lane, and then there is a second one, which is north of the pool house. It's immediately north of the pool house, on, on the upper side of the.
It's a, a wall, surrounded by a wall?
Yes, yeah, there's, there's a retaining wall on the northwest side, and it sits between two, uh, uh, rock-out croppings.
Okay, uh, I was looking, looking for a rain garden, this is kind of more of a, okay, uh, story, no, not really.
We did do it, we did do a test hole there, and even though there's rock on either side, uh, there's fifty inches to, uh, to rock, so, there's, uh,
Right, and I, I, I think in this, in this particular case, and I think actually, with, with the landscape case-by-case situation, we're kind of looking there, you know, what's the benefit, what's the detriment? I think in this case, you're replacing the two trees, but if we're gonna be putting more back, as, as you had said, I, I agree with you. You'd be hard-pressed to find a place to actually plant a new tree, seeing either one, it's a wetland, it's a pond, or it's a rock. You know, and you're actually, yes, there is some lawn there, but that lawn uh, is bifurcated by the upland review area on one side, and the septic system for the house on the other. I'm reading that plan correctly. So did you just basically, you know, five square inches to plant something, which I?
There isn't an awful lot, uh, I did speak with the landscape designer today, and there is opportunities to plant other trees and, and shrubs in the area, which, uh, uh, we'll put together and, and submit to staff as part of the zoning permit sign-off.
Okay.
All right, um.
And I, and the, uh, I, I hope you weren't too bored by the boring report, but it did show that where we're putting the pool, uh, has eight feet before you hit resistance, so, uh, although there may be a lot of rock here, there's not rock where they're gonna put the pool, and, uh, and I did speak with Rudy Riddberg about it, he said that, uh, there may be some small rock removal, but that could be done with a rock hammer.
You gotta give us credit, that we all can beat a dead joke.
And then laugh about it the next day.
We're still laughing, okey-dokey.
We'd also like to request that you don't put in a high-diving port, because, you know, eight feet's pretty shallow.
Yeah.
Um, any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, I don't want to be too tiresome, uh, but, uh, on the replacement of the trees, um, the, it's a two-for-one, uh, we're replacing a large, um, mature oak.
Oak, that's right.
Um, and, and a hemlock of indeterminate size. What, I mean, what are we required here to, I, I don't know how big this oak is, but large would suggest it's, I don't know, what, it's got a diameter of some significance, and are we coming back and putting in tiny little saplings? What, what is, what is proposed here?
Uh, when I spoke with the, uh, landscape designer, uh, one of the challenges on this property is, there are a lot of big trees. Uh, and her thought was that it would be better to do understory trees, uh, such as, uh, dogwoods and that-sized tree, rather than large trees, because the, the site is so heavily wooded to begin with, so that, that was her thought in terms of, uh, placement.
So my description of tiny saplings is a little more accurate?
Hmm.
Yeah.
Uh, these are probably in the, the two-to-three-inch diameter uh, plantings.
I can tell you in the research we've been doing, Peter, that one of the things we found is that there are towns that require, I mean, just when we start proposing the landscape regs, they, they require, um, caliper replacement, so you, you,
Yeah.
you get overall caliper replacement, I believe Westport is doing caliper replacement, or, yeah, is doing caliper replacements, so if you take down eight big trees, you would have to put, I don't know, sixteen, or twenty, or thirty, I don't know, but that's, but again, it gets tricky on some properties, and that's why we've been hesitating. Um, okay, so would you like to see, would you like to specify anything on the trees, or how about if we have Jackie review the final tree selection?
Okay.
Yeah, I, I would, I'd love to defer to the judgment of our, uh, highly capable staff.
Perfect, so, and Jackie being highly capable, we're gonna put her on top of that.
And she, she.
And again, so, the, now that I'm, now that I understand that it's going to be, uh, something of the order of, um, flowering trees, which is a great idea.
Okay.
We were, just, we always encourage indigenous uh, trees, but, uh, you know, the, the varietals now are pretty hardy and do very well. But, uh, we don't mind if you, uh, replace with an oak or two. Uh, just stay away from some of the more common varieties, if you do go, if you do, uh, uh, put in trees like, uh, red naples and, uh, and the like, which are not as, not as, uh, grand or, uh, interesting. But the oaks and, uh, hickories and beech are a much better, uh, much better for, um, fitting into, uh, the, the landscape here.
We'll, we'll certainly review that, uh, with her.
Okey-dokey.
That suggestion would probably also eliminate putting in kusa dogwoods.
Kusa are beautiful, and they, they work with the environment very well. Better than, uh, some others. But there are so many kusa in town, they are, uh, you know, they're, they're kind of like a new indigenous species.
All right.
In my book.
Yeah, we're gonna leave this in Jackie's capable hands.
Alrighty, okay, any more comments from the commission on this? Do we have any comments from the public on this? Please raise your virtual hand. No comments from the public. If you object to this item being closed at this time, please raise your hand, flap it at the screen. Someday, we're gonna read these minutes. Okay, nobody has objected to closing this item, this item is now closed. And we will move to our next application, uh, which is fifty-nine Moreland Road, it's application number seven for Tom Faschetti, applicant for Martha Lamb, for a final site plan and special permit. applicant for Martha Lamb for a final site plan and special permit to finish an existing portion of the attic and build a detached garage to the rear of a home, which is already over 150,000 cubic feet. Are you remaining with us, Mr. Hegney?
I am, Madam Chair.
It's gonna be a long night, because I think we're gonna be seeing a lot of you, aren't we?
I'll give you a break over the next one, but yes, then you'll see me back again. I did take two others off the agenda, so.
We will be deeply grateful.
I didn't want to wear out my welcome.
Yeah.
So this is to address, first, we're addressing the zoning violation that came up after the last hearing. Is when my clients moved into the house, they brought with them their chicken coop and chickens and the greenhouse that they had on the other property, not realizing that this would have to be dealt with as structures. The chicken coop will be reduced in height to no more than six feet. And the greenhouse will be relocated. The original plan had a two bay garage. This will be reduced to a one bay garage, and the greenhouse will be attached to it. Or adjacent to it, I should say. And we have included both the chicken coop and the greenhouse and reduced garage as part of a revised exemption form, which shows a total additional square footage of 587 square feet. That's including all three structures, the new garage, the greenhouse, and the chicken coop. I also reviewed with the clients placing the trees. We've also discussed this with Bill Kenny, our landscape architect, and we can replace them with a two to one replacement of the trees. It'll be removed as part of installing the greenhouse and the garage.
Sometime this afternoon, you sent in your cumulative impervious calculation?
Yeah, I didn't get it from our civil engineers until later in the day.
It was after, it was after three. I have not looked at it. Mr. Hegney, would you be able to, I don't know if the rest of the commission has had an opportunity, would you summarize for us?
Yes, so the original drainage report that was submitted showed an increase with the, just the garage of 424 square feet of coverage. And with the new plan, there are, the garage has been reduced to 391 square feet. The greenhouse is 155, and the chicken coop is 147. When you subtract the sidewalks and other areas that are being removed, you have a net increase of 587 square feet. And this is.
Which is under the thousand max.
Correct.
Okay.
And this is certified by our civil engineer, Joe Rosoli.
Okay.
I think that covers this.
Any questions or comments from the commission? Mr. Lowe, it looked like you were taking a note.
No, I was just being consistent and was gonna follow up on the, on this application with the five white pines that were to be removed. Some similar question that was just posed in the previous application about do they all have to go, and what are they being replaced with, and how large, et cetera? But I assume you're gonna get back to me and say it's two for one.
It's two for one, and I did speak with Mr. Kenny about native species and providing additional habitat, which can be accomplished by providing different species.
What is meant by your term additional habitat?
Some, some, some trees have berries, some are evergreens, some are deciduous. And they provide a different place for different birds to nest and for, and for food.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, so we've got the greenhouse being moved to the.
Yeah, we've got the greenhouse, yeah, the greenhouse, and the greenhouse, the chicken coop, and it's only one car garage now.
One car garage, but the chicken coop stays in the same location next to the house.
Yeah.
Okay.
Correct.
And if you do one on the tree.
They just lopped off the penthouse of it, right?
And Mr. Hegney, just say this out loud.
It's gonna be no more than six feet.
Just say this out loud to me again, because I forgot to ask this yesterday, and it was kind of puzzling me. There is absolutely no change in the setbacks, correct? Except that you're changing for the accessory structure. You're lowering it, so you're good, and you're moving the greenhouse.
The chicken coop will stay where it is. It does not meet setbacks, so therefore.
But you're gonna lower it.
Six feet or less.
Right.
And then the garage and the greenhouse are in the rear yard and meet the 35 foot setback of accessory structures in the rear yard.
All right, okay. But the green, but the greenhouse is existing was at 11.6, and so you're moving it. Okay, I got it. All right.
It's gonna be a minimum of 35, yes.
Got it. Alrighty. Why, Nick is laughing.
It's just, it's interesting actually how Mr. Hegney describes this. It is the rear yard, is correct, although it's the technically front of the house. So it's just, it's amusing to me.
It's because a third of the property is wetlands on the other side.
Exactly, yes.
So commissioners, do you have any questions on this? Any more questions, comments? No. Does anybody in the public have any comments on this application? Again, this is 59 Moreland, application seven, Tom Faschetti, applicant for Martha Lamb, final site plan and special permit. No comments. Okay, with that, does anybody on the commission object to this item being closed at this time? Please raise your hand if you object. Seeing no objections, this item is now closed. And we say goodbye to Mr. Hegney for a while?
I'm hoping it's just a short while, but yes.
You never know, we can overwork things sometimes. Okay, number eight, Grace Elizabeth LLC. Hold on, let me, I'll give you your break. Okay. And there's Larry Liebman. Mr. Liebman, whenever you're ready. This is Grace Elizabeth LLC for a final site plan and special permit to demolish the existing dwelling tennis court and construct a new single-family dwelling garage, driveway, patio, pool, pool house, fence, retaining wells, drainage improvements, et cetera. We have seen this before, Three Lauter Way. Now, just to let you know, we would need an extension on this application as it is a must close by next week. And I can't read the rest of my notes. Okay.
Hi, good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the commission, Larry Liebman representing the applicant for SE Minor. We have been, we have reviewed and looked at the comments that came in from the town engineer with regarding the permeable driveway on Lauter Way that the Conservation Commission has been looking at and requesting. The initial response that we have to that is, is that it is downslope of the septic system, and therefore it would need to be at least 50 feet away. We would have to cut off that permeable pavement, but we would like to, and as well as what the, what the town engineer has said, that there's a, only a 1.37 foot separation distance to the groundwater. We agreed to the one to one tree replacement. The FAR on the project is .058 is proposed, and it has a .09 is permitted, so we're below that. The changes to impervious surfaces is that we have, we are reducing the impervious surfaces by 3,385 square feet, as well as every storm in what has been designed is a reduction in is reduction in storm for the, all of the storm events from one to 100 years. We have agreed to the tree with the one to one tree replacement that Conservation Commission has requested, and we are before you because it's a site plan special permit that it is 214, 214,000 cubic feet. And I'm here to answer any questions if there are any more. We have stipulated everything else that the Conservation Commission has required, and I would like the opportunity to work through prior to the issuance of the building permit, whether or not a permeable portion of the drive can be permeable with the separation distance that is needed for the septic system.
Any questions from the commission?
Mr. Liebman, I think you was recommended about a construction staging plan.
We'll gladly, we'll gladly do that prior to the issuance of a building permit and submit it to staff, and submit it to staff with the final construction drawings as required.
Okay.
Anybody else? Any comments or questions? No. Does anybody from the public wish to speak on this application? Again, this is Three Lauter Way, final site plan and special permit. No comments from the public. Okay, let me just double check. All right, I'm not seeing anything outstanding. All right. Okay, then, so does anybody object to closing this application at this time? Nobody is objecting. This application is now closed. And now we bring back Mr. Hegney. Nice seeing you, Mr. Liebman.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Hegney is back. Mr. Hegney, if you have no objection, we're gonna combine these applications.
I would request that, Madam Chair, thank you.
This is now three applications for Plaza 200 LLC at 1141 King Street. They are for a zoning text amendment, a zoning map amendment, and a final site plan and special permit. We focused most of our discussion yesterday, Mr. Hegney, on the zoning text amendment. And we actually were interested in, or I was, I shouldn't say we, because I'm not sure where the commission came out, in discussing just first the zoning text amendment with you and potentially getting later to the site plan, having you convert that to preliminary and getting later to the site plan. Because, and this is, this worked very well for us on the ambassador application, where they also needed a zoning text amendment, because we were looking at the site plan and looking at the text amendment and just kind of couldn't get there. But in any event, could you open with the discussion of the text amendment and let us take it from there?
Well, I was going to explain why I thought this was different than what you were dealing with on Old Track Road. And.
Well, they are different. One is a conservation cluster, and the other one is.
Well, I.
An assisted living facility.
The other thing that's really different is we've been with three other, the agencies in town, and I wanted to go over those. We, this has significant wetlands on the property. We've been to wetlands at their December, January, and February meetings. At the end of the February meeting, the agency members directed the staff to prepare conditions of approval that will be heard at their March 28th meeting. Because we're looking at this as a conservation cluster zone, we've also had three meetings with the Conservation Commission. We met with them on January, and February, and March meetings. And at their March meeting, they voted five in favor and opposed to supporting the rezoning and the site plan that we are presenting. They also had a significant number of suggested conditions of approval, some nine that they included. And we do not have an issue with any of the recommendations that they've made. We also met twice with ARC in January and then earlier this month. And they approved the plans as submitted. The themes that we have gone over in those eight meetings are very similar. They wanted a larger conservation area. We had originally started with what we submitted to you as a 40% of the site being a conservation area. Through the process with those eight meetings, we amended it to 50%. And then the plan that you have in front of you now is for 60% of the site to be preserved as part of conservation area.
I'm seeing, I'm seeing 50.
It's 60.75%, which is what the Conservation Commission and, yeah, the, I want to get to the regulation, but I want to go through what's really, I think, different than what we have gotten in the way of support of the boards that you look to, to provide some comment on protecting the environment. They wanted us to protect more trees. We've done that by relocating septic systems, proposed septic systems, increasing the buffer area. Pat, if you could bring up slide four on what we've submitted. Because I, it's been a while since we've gone over this, and and we were really looking to see if we could satisfy the concerns that both conservation and wetlands had as part of developing this site. So protect more trees, and the third was plant more trees and make the trees bigger. So, for example, we had come in with two to two and a half is the size of the trees. We're now at three to four and a half diameter trees. And we have many more of them, over 200 trees proposed for the site. The landscape plan shows how many new trees are being added to the, to the property, and also shows the number of trees that are being preserved, particularly along the east side of the property, which abuts the Audubon Preserve. And if we could bring up that landscape plan, you can also see that we have a significant portion of the property that is preserved as additional meadow around the wetland meadow. And one of the things that we realized in going through this with the other agencies is that this is a rather unique wetland in town. Most of them are forested in some way. This is an open meadow. And and it provides for a completely different habitat than what would be provided for with a, with a more forested wetland area. And what we were looking to do with this revised landscape plan and site plan is to enhance the area around the wetlands. So it's not just the wetlands that are protected, and I understand wetlands are not something that can be developed, except I want to make a point on that. The, it's protecting that buffer area as well. So we've expanded that and enhanced that as part of this plan. When I was thinking about the discussion that you had yesterday, you know, is this something? that you had yesterday, you know, is, is this something good for the environment? Is this something that the town wants to encourage? Uh, I, I was looking at a, a couple of sections of the, the P O C D. Uh, section uh, or uh, objective one point two, but to preserve existing natural landscape uh, to prevent uh, commercial impacts uh, in the residential areas. Uh, King Street is primarily a commercial area north of this site. We have a, assistant living, we have a nursing home, we have schools, uh, we have golf, golf courses, and we have a church. So uh, and another church that was approved by the commission but hasn't been developed. Uh, so this allows for residential development of this property. I, I have to say that other people who have come to me to develop the site, we're looking at, one was a soccer club. Uh, one was an assisted living facility. Uh, the other was a riding club. And a riding club would be treated differently by the Wetland Agency because uh, agricultural activities, farm activities are exempt from wetland review. So you, not, not that you want to use them all the time, uh, but you can actually have paddocks in wetlands as part of having a horse farm. So, uh, and, and the Wetland Agency here has, has approved those uh, for certain uh, horse uh, stables. The objective four point one is to update the conservation regulations to incentivize developers uh, to build on oversized lots. Here we have a nineteen acre lot in the, the four acre zone. It certainly is beyond uh, what uh, it, it would be the normal size. And, and frankly, the, the lots and chieftains uh, immediately to the south, it was part of a conservation cluster zone. Uh, are, are in the, the little over one acre size range. Uh, and then the others to permanently protect unprotected open space. And as I said, uh, with a horse farm, uh, even the wetlands on the site are not protected. Here, we're proposing to in perpetuity uh, protect sixty percent of the site. So uh, we have this R A C C four zone, which is what we're proposing uh, to rezone this property to. It was adopted in nineteen eighty-eight. As far as I can tell, it was used only once, and that's for the property immediately to the south of this uh, chieftains. I was trying to think of another conservation subdivision even that has been done since the adoption of the, the four area limitations in the two and four acre zones, which happened in two thousand and three. And uh, I, I wasn't coming up with one. And uh, part of it is that the reduction of actual floor area that you can build uh, has been impediment, even though there is a twenty-five percent increase that's permitted in the conservation zone uh, as part of uh, the, the, the reduced size lots. So uh, what, we have a, a goal. We have an interest in protecting these areas of town and providing for greater density of habitats, so larger areas that are protected. Uh, but we have regulations that really aren't encouraging it. Um, so uh, if the goal is preserve open space, and that's a really good idea for us to have. Uh, and sixty percent of an area is a significant portion of a lot that would be protected in perpetuity. Um, uh, so how do we go about uh, in, encouraging that? Uh, when I went back through the, the uh, conservation regulations, I realized we don't really need to change anything in six dash twenty-three. Uh, it gives the commission some leeway on, on size, but it says consists of less than ten acres or less than twenty acres. Uh, I, I don't think that needs to be changed at all. I think that can stay right the way it is. Uh, the only section that must be changed as part of uh, this type of proposal is for the R A C C four into uh, the conservation cluster zones where it was a minimum of fifty. And I know staff went through and uh, prepared a list of all of the properties, ten acres or more. But this is not for just any uh, subdivision, conservation subdivision. This would be for the cluster uh, development. And uh, we, if, if I haven't made it clear, uh, we formally withdraw any amendment to the percentage of lot area that would need to be preserved to leave it at sixty percent.
Okay.
The, the other part of what we were proposing
So let me just make sure I'm totally clear because this, I had not, if you meant to say that to us, I did not understand it. You are saying that it'll go, it'll, it would sixty, and at this point, you're only talking about the, about changing the acreage.
Right.
The minimum
And, and we had proposed including some flexibility
On the setbacks.
In, on setbacks for accessory structures.
Yeah.
And uh, and frankly, the, the reason that we're proposing this is because we were specifically asked by the chairman of the Wetland Agency to bring this to you. He said, I think this is much, right, for accessory structures. He said, why can't you move the pool for house five on the north side of the property uh, closer to the property line and farther away from the wetlands in the center of the site?
It's that location of the tennis courts that was bothering everybody.
So the, we had originally proposed the tennis court to be more in the center of uh, the, the site on the easterly side where the uh, buffer area is wider. And uh, their comment was, if you can move it away from the center of the site and move it down closer to the road, uh, we'll then be able to provide a greater buffer area for the wetlands without encroaching into the hundred foot. And, and they thought this would be a much better way to create a larger and denser uh, 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 open space uh, for providing a different habitat. But we spent a, a good deal of time talking about wanting to maintain it as a meadow.
Yep. Yep. They're on, I, yeah.
And, and when it needs to be mowed and is it best to mow it in the fall or the spring or?
I saw the mowings. I got that. I saw the mowing things. I, I saw where they were going with that. And I think you're, you're starting to, to go the direction, as you're talking, I'm more comfortable because it, it feels like everybody got more focused on what are you doing environmentally when you do this? Rather than, oh, let's just use this regulation and let's fix it so it works for our situation. I'm getting uh, from, from my own perspective, I'm getting more comfortable with where you're heading. And I, if, if you were trying to make it clear in the app, I'm sorry, because I did not pick that up. Um, is Pat there?
Can I make a suggestion? Yeah. Can, can Pat bring up the, the actual text amendment as proposed?
Okay, so I can, I um, I, I can start, okay, so I can start working on that. Um, so, but see, the one that's in our staff report all, still has the, the, the change percent. That's what's bothering me.
But I, I want to, yeah, I want to go point by point because I want to make sure I'm clear on uh, what Mr. Hegney is, is discussing. Um, I, you know, as an example, the first one, six twenty-three, no change. But I want to make sure I understand what that means by no change. So if we're going this in the text amendment in front of us, we can actually see what was proposed and what
All right, so in the meantime
Or what Mr. Hegney is proposing compared to what's in front of us.
So in the meantime, let's let Mr. Hegney finish and let me see if I can catch up.
Well, uh,
Here he is, Madam Chair, if you want to put the uh, regs up, Pat.
Okay, I'm almost there, actually.
I'm sorry, what section?
Hold on, six twenty-three?
Yeah, six twenty-three is the first one. I think we can probably just, we, we can rip through it real quickly because each one of them is very uh, easy to find through it.
All right, so. Yeah. All right, so this is what
Okay.
This is your language changes here, and so you still have
So when I looked at this language
This one
In twenty-three C.
Right.
Um, I didn't see where we needed to take out the, because it, it's, it doesn't say no more, no more than it says consisting of less than ten acres or consisting uh, a zone of less than twenty acres in the R A two. It, see, it's, it's not worded as a limitation.
Well
More as an opportunity for the commission.
Okay, all right, so
So I don't think any of this language needs to be changed.
To change, except if we were to get the opportunity in a smaller, smaller sized zone, I, I, my sense is it's still tennis too much, but we could leave it there um, for now. And then I know I saw the language on the percent. All right, um, you've got
This is one that, that is critical because we have a nineteen acre site, and this is fifty acres as a requirement. So, uh, we were proposing to reduce this to ten. I, I, I think when you, you look at how this regulation was originally adopted, uh, that, that, that was fine because you were dealing with a much larger site. I think now you need to look at uh, are there other places where if we had a chance on a ten acre site to preserve six acres on it? Oh, wouldn't you do it?
Yes, yeah, I, I, you know, we've had this conversation. I know that I, I, it goes back to Katie, Diane, and me having this conversation that we, should we be evaluating the, the size of the, of the? Okay, and here's your, should we be evaluating this size of? And here you go from a hundred to fifty.
I, I originally came in and said uh, that accessory structures could have a setback of fifty feet. And you were looking for something that you could uh, analyze how the particular site is being developed as to whether a reduction in the setback was appropriate. And um, and so that's, you know, with, no pride of authorship on this. I was looking for some kind of way that it gives the commission the flexibility to say, yeah, there is an environmental benefit here. Uh, and in this particular case, we can see having a lesser setback for an accessory uh, structure.
The, the, this is coming from, from conservation and wetland comments saying that in their opinion, there is a environmental benefit. So they're kind of providing that expertise to us to say that in this particular case.
Yeah, and there are two, there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
In, in this particular case, a hundred foot is okay, but fifty would be fine because actually there's something there to preserve. Uh, in, in their opinion, there's something out there that's uh, and you, with a lesser setback would be preserved. So in this particular case, it worked.
So there are two places on this and uh, maybe just as an example, we can bring up the uh,
Um.
Uh, the landscape plan.
Pat, can you bring up the landscape plan? Because I'm on the full app. Okay, so here's the thing that here's what I was going to beat you up about. This says fifty.
Well, knowing that you are going to beat me up over this, not wanting to get beat up over this, uh, we are hereby amending, and I will submit that to staff uh, tomorrow, uh, to not change this at all.
Okay, so that's why you really threw, you really threw us when you didn't, I mean, because I've been stuck on this whole issue as we reduce it. Um, what, with the environmental impact.
Um, so that, this has been very much an evolution as we've gone through with the other town boards. Uh, and they've said, no, we, if, if you're going to do a development like this, not that, this similar to the discussion all of you had yesterday, if you're going to have a development like this, you need to provide more open space and you need to protect it. And uh, uh, we, we don't see a problem with what you're proposing. Uh, we think it's a appropriate use of the site, but you have to preserve sixty percent of the site. And so that came about by increasing it on the east side of the property where there's a wooded area uh, moving the, the uh, the proposed septic areas uh, to provide for uh, more uh, protection. And reducing the lawn areas, the, 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 sort of the active lawn area around each of the houses. It was also very important for uh, wetlands and for, we could uh, put up a slide of yes, that's, this one is the, the one to look at. So um, uh, you can see the uh, the dark line that runs along the uh, the wetland buffer area with uh, dots. Those dots are uh, uh, demarcation features, uh, boulders. Uh, Conservation also recommended that we use a Belgian block at, at grade because that prevents the lawn area from encroaching into the meadow. Uh, that was Mr. Rutherford's suggestion. Uh, and we have increased the buffer substantially. So you have a, a meadow area, and then you have uh, and a further enhanced meadow area and a, a significant reduction of the lawn area around uh, each of the houses so that they have some backyard. But I, I think people who are going to be purchasing here are really going to want to enjoy the, the meadow. There, there is a walking path uh, that goes around the entire site, including uh, a, a boardwalk through the wetlands itself uh, that uh, that wetlands uh, supports and uh, will include as part of their uh, uh, their approval on the twenty-eighth. Uh, so, well, by making the, the changes that you see on this and adding uh, the additional landscaping, particularly the, the, the much larger trees uh, along the uh, driveways uh, and, and the, the, the access road. Uh, and by sliding this tennis court from the middle of the site where it could meet the hundred foot setback and still not encroach into the wetlands down to uh, the southern portion of the property uh, where it would meet the fifty foot, but would uh, but would allow for that whole center of the site uh, to be included as part of, of the meadow. So
When people go to the
What wetlands was
Okay, and when people access the tennis court, how are they going to do it?
Uh, from the uh, from the driveway. They would be going from the driveway.
They, they, it's a walking thing, like there's a path there, but it's
We can't hear you again, Nick.
Um, there's a path there, but there's no actual vehicle access to the, the community house and the court itself, correct?
Right.
Okay.
So what you have to do is get in your car and drive around?
Well, see, that's, to me, that's kind of an interesting thing. If you're actually in a house
Like, how sustainable?
There's no place to park there because the driveway, the, their roadway is so narrow.
Right. So, and, and that was another thing that we've been going over with engineering on uh, reducing the amount of pavement uh, so that the cul-de-sac rather than being a fifty foot uh, radius, it's at a forty foot radius. We looked at reducing that further, but the truck movements uh, don't work.
So go back to
Conservation had asked us on that.
Supposed to, if I want to play tennis, I have to get in my car?
Uh, well, since tennis is part of You could get in a golf cart. That's true.
No, but, but seriously, you've got the tennis
You could just walk.
Okay, and there's going to be a path there.
Yes. There's a path of, that goes around the entire property.
Mr. Laurel, can you?
Oh, wait, so you're going to do that, you, you, you consider that the access to the tennis court?
That, and, and the road.
Have you met the residents of Gra-? Okay, so then you're, then you're back to driving.
Yeah, Mr. Laurel, can you zoom in right there?
I mean.
Okay, so that's that's the end of the path, just south or just below the community greenhouse. But there's no But there's nowhere, there's no place to park a car. So if you're in building number.
Five.
Five, farthest away, you're walking all the way down the driveway, the roadway, down to the path to play tennis or going out the back way, all the way around the, the wetland to get to the tennis court. So that's, that's the access. It's actually a walking path in both directions.
Correct.
Okay.
And tell me again why you can't put the tennis court over with the houses and why you couldn't make the houses smaller?
Well, that, that was part of the discussion we had at the last wetland meeting too with a number of the members and what we're providing here is virtually everything is outside the 100 foot review area. All the houses are, and most of the, the patios around the, the house and the pool are outside that 100 foot review area. Forget about encroaching into the wetlands themselves. And so since the houses don't impact any kind of environmentally sensitive issues for the wetlands, we did not see the need for reducing the size of dwellings. And frankly, even if you reduce the size of the dwellings, you, you still need an area that's relatively flat for the, for the tennis court and the property basically from where the houses are east slopes down to, to the road and then continues to slope down to the easterly property line.
Okay, I can't, I, I'm not, I'm just asking you this question. If you push dwelling four back into its seated lawn area and you reduce that weird circle in front of it, you could make that you could put the tennis court right in that seated lawn area at the end of the cul-de-sac and all the neighbors could have their friends come over to play tennis and they could park in the cul-de-sac, which makes a lot of sense.
So.
Victoria is here. Where are you?
Andrew, Andrew White is our civil engineer. And if you could bring him in and, and also Sean Reagan, our landscape architect from Ty and Bond.
Is the person named Ashley who has their hand up, can Andrew and Ty and Bond raise your hands, please? So, because we can see you. All right, there's Andrew White, but.
And then Sean Reagan is the landscape architect.
I'm seeing Rick Canavan.
Rick Canavan is also our environmental consultant at Ty and Bond as well, yes.
There's a person named Ashley, I suspect that that's a member of the public. All right, so, so yes, the question is you're gonna play tennis with someone, why don't you have the tennis court over by your house and your neighbor parks in your cul-de-sac and you just stroll over? Why do you have it all the way around so it's inconvenient to get to and can't you fit it in if you laid it out differently? And then you really do a beautiful environmental job.
And the tennis court within the upland review area as well, all those accessory structures are within the upland review area.
For the record.
That's correct.
So you pull it out of the upland review area and you put it into that seated lawn area by the cul-de-sac?
Yeah, if Andrew White, our civil engineer could, could comment because what you don't see on this is the contours of the, the land itself.
No, not seeing the contours, but you know, you're I, I, I think we leave you with, we're just asking you the question. How do you do this so that you don't have to have people driving to the tennis court and you've got a place to accommodate vehicles when they have guests? And everybody's already right by the tennis court and you have the community center? And do you really need a community building when you've only got a handful of houses? I'm just saying.
For the record, Andrew, Andrew White from Ty and Bond.
Hello, Andrew White from Ty and Bond.
So the question about the houses and the, the location of the houses, so there's a, a ridge line that bisects the site going from south to north that the houses are sitting on. And as Mr. Hagney was referring to, the gray changes from those houses, it gently slopes to the west, to the, the wetland. But from that ridge line to the east.
Can you show us the topple? Just go over.
Absolutely.
You gotta co-host him, Patrick. That means he has to behave, right?
I do. Let me pull that up for you.
In the other 10 hearings that we've had, Andrew has always behaved very well.
Let me.
Okay, and everybody's.
It still says it's disabled. Whoever has control.
Patrick has control. He doesn't trust me with that.
It's done. It's, he's, he should be able.
So everybody's been saying the same thing to you and it's the same, we're, we're struggling in the same place. Everybody wants this to be as environmentally good as it can be. And now we're down to the question that everybody's been asking you about the location of the tennis courts. And it sounds to me like wetlands really wanted to get them out of the way as well. And can you guys do something like that?
All right, so let me zoom in here. I rotated these sheets to keep the same orientation that you're familiar with.
Yeah, it doesn't bother us.
Okay.
But you gotta get it so bold eyes can see the numbers. Okay.
Except for this one, which I completely didn't do.
All right, doesn't matter.
All right, so here's, here's the cul-de-sac.
Okay, you're gonna still have to call out the, the, the numbers. Okay, no, we got it. Okay.
Perfect. So dwelling four is up at 344. Our driveway comes down at about 10%.
So it's four feet. You could figure out four feet. You've got that ridge at three.
This, this is, this is 14 feet from the cul-de-sac of the house.
I thought you said 334.
344, five.
344, okay.
So it's a 14, 14 foot change here.
All right, so where would you put it? Where would you put it if, if you had to move it? If you had a mean planning and zoning commission that was insisting on moving your tennis court? Because what we're looking for there, 342 to 340, if you slid down dwelling four, you've got a relatively good area in there to the right and up where you're all around 340 and 330. Now up some, between four and five.
Between four and five.
Yeah, you've got, I don't know, you'd have to move the dwellings. And again, you've got big houses and they all have pools and they all have those circular things in the front. If you simplified your architecture and made these houses smaller, I mean, these are good sized houses. You're building 8,000 square foot houses here.
So what we are running up against is there is an offsite wetland that was picked up to the east. And so we have an upland review area that's now to our.
In there.
And our grading is impacting. So if we were just, for the sake of argument, reconfigure four and five or move them to the east, we start moving these slopes.
You gotta make them smaller.
But even if, for the sake of argument, this was, it, it, it did become smaller or wind wasn't there, there's still so much area around the dwelling that you would, we'd like to have level in that whole block, the, the driveway, the motor court, the entrance that moves with it, that attached with it, the patio, the terrace, the pool. So even if the house is slightly in a different configuration, there's a, a large bulk of area that moves with that dwelling. So as it moves, everything moves. And then we still have the, the slopes and we were trying to minimize the slopes as much as possible with the retaining walls around this motor court, there's a retaining wall around the cul-de-sac. We couldn't make the, the grades work with three, house three down to the cul-de-sac.
And there's another point also, there's a tree adjacent to number dwelling three. And we spent a good deal of time talking about that at the Conservation Commission meeting. That, that's a, a very large elm that the conservation staff and, and chairman appointed out was of utmost importance to maintain. That, that was probably the only tree that they specifically talked about at their meetings. And we were looking to
Yeah, okay.
Rotate the houses and move them away from that.
Okay, but you're still not answering this question that I keep asking you, which is you've got, your average GFA here is 10,000 square feet. I mean, I, the smallest of these houses is 8,000 square feet. Now, you know, in all kindness to you, you're talking about an average GFA of 10,000. So could you accommodate better if these weren't such large structures?
As Andrew was saying, it's not just the footprint of the house, it's also the driveway, it's the parking area. It's a patio, it's the desire to have the pool. So e- even if we were to take 1,000 square feet out of each of the footprints, I don't think that matters enough so that you get a tennis court over here. And the wetland agency thought that putting the tennis court in the southwest corner of the property in a level area made more sense than locating it elsewhere where it would meet the 100 foot setback from the property line.
Yeah, but I think the wetland, the wetland is, okay, hold on just a second, Nick. The wetland agency is focused on wetlands. I'm focused on the fact that people have a tennis court that is actually not on their property, basically. They are going to be driving to this tennis court. There's no place to park. They are not going to be walking around the loop and you are inherently creating this thing with cars which isn't very conducive to conservation. And nobody's asked you about that. So now we're saying to you, look at what you're doing. You're building these big old houses and you've got a tennis court on the other side and you know, we're, we hear a lot in, in, in these meetings that people don't really want to like walk to something. So if it's not convenient to them, they're gonna drive there. Go ahead, Nick.
Mr. White, can you, can you scroll to the north of building five?
Yes.
That's perfect, right there. The, the shaded area, is that the wetland area? That area around?
This is the conservation easement.
Okay.
And the dashed line is the 100 foot review area. Then this was an example of, we had the pool on the west side of the house and the wetland agency said, well, if you could have it 50 feet off the property line rather than 100, you could then increase the conservation area adjacent to the wetland. And this is the, this and the tennis court are the two examples of what the wetlands was looking to, for us to do in proposing the, that amendment to the regulations.
Okay, so you've got the 50 foot, that's the, that's the first dashed line from the property line. That's the, the accessory setback. Okay, is it possible to put the tennis court up in that area? I guess it probably wouldn't fit because you'd have to be stuck right into the corner. You'd, you'd still have to rotate building five.
And the, and the existing topography is steep.
Yeah, I see that. Okay.
But you could work, you could work a house in the existing topography. We even talked to, don't fall down, you guys, because I know this is not what you consider your client base. We were even wondering, you could do, you could connect the houses, you could do something totally different. You're, you don't have lots per se, so you could not space them the way you're spacing them. You could share driveways. There's a lot of things that you, you've, you've basically retained the mansion concepts and put them in a conservation zone. And I'm thinking, I'm just suggesting what if you thought out of the box in terms of not having people drive to the tennis court and the community building, could you get a better environmental answer?
I, I do believe one issue we were up against was a minimum distance between the houses. Isn't that correct, Mr.?
Yes, yes. I was just gonna mention that. So.
There is no minimum distance.
Yeah, the setback should be removed under the cluster now.
Uh, no, let me give you that language because it, it, that came up as part of the, the conservation and they said, well, I don't think you meet this particular section of the regulations and I'm.
And he's right. I think you multiply the number of stories by 12 feet for the two adjacent houses. That gives you the separation.
Okey dokey, we're here changing that regulation. So why don't we open our brains up and say, how do we achieve the optimal environmental answer? And we'll change the regulation. That's what we're here doing. Let's not get limited by another regulation if it's keeping us from getting a good environmental answer.
Okay.
You know what I really want you to do, Mr. Hagney, is go away and think about it. You know that, right?
Well.
But I need the rest of the commission to weigh in.
While I'm still here.
I know, but you need to, you, can you bring down the plans for a sec, Pat, so I can look at the commission? Sorry.
Oh, yes.
Yes, sorry. So I'd like the commission to weigh in because Nick and I have been taking this path solo and you know, there's we, we always say there's eight of us, there's only seven of us, six of us right now, but there's six of us. So what do you guys think? Should we try to get, should we push for a better environmental? Are you comfortable with the tennis courts? What do you want to do?
My thought on, on the tennis courts is a couple of different things is that we're putting accessory structures kind of on the line. And the reason I was actually talking about this, Mr. White, is that up in that corner that we were just talking about has tennis courts on the adjacent property. On, in the proposed location, as you have it, you have a residence that's on the adjacent property. You know, is there another place that this actually, you know, could actually be? So you're all encompassed inside your envelope of the cluster with the houses. And I think, I think the chairwoman is going in the same, same direction. I think, I, you know, I'm indifferent in terms of, you know, having to walk down there. It is what it is, you know, and building five, right? You've got to walk all the way down there. So how many times are they going to really use it? That kind of thing. So it may not even be used in my opinion, so. But I think actually taking a look at it, is there another possible location with some adjustments to be made that can be more of a central location? Not particularly because it's far away, but particularly to get it away from the adjacent residents. The other thing is, as I've gone through the application, as we see this, and I, I, I think, Mr. Hagney, I'm not too sure if you addressed this, that there's still an issue about the width of the driveway. We haven't touched on it. Maybe that's something we hold off on for a few minutes, but maybe, you know, I'd like to get to that at some time.
Yeah, because it still has a DPW comment on it.
Right. Now, with, uh, uh, Mr. Hagney, just to say kind of yes or no, was staff provided with a declaration of restrictions on this?
Yes, yeah, we did provide that early on in the process.
Okay, would the conditions that's provided by wetlands and conservation need to be included in that declaration?
I, I think to the extent that the maintenance that Rick Canavan put together would need to be recited in that to to satisfy the conditions that, that wetlands and conservation are looking for. So I think we would need to amend it to, to reflect that, yes.
Okay, okay. Madam Chair, that's, that's what I have at the moment. I think there's some kind of outstanding thoughts I have.
Okay, Mr. Lowe, you were gonna say something?
No, I, I agree. I would, I can't remember how you phrased it, but I would look to maximize the environmental benefit.
And I think it'd be a good exercise to, to combine driveways and, and see what we could do there. But I appreciate the extensive reworking of the elevations at that end and maybe, maybe by reworking the driveway access, maybe you could, that would help, but you know, as, the, the idea of, of having golf carts to access the tennis court could be just as very simple. As the idea of having golf carts to access the tennis court could be just a very simple way to actually make that plan work. Because I know that, although you might want to do it occasionally, it's not something you'd normally do. But the idea of.
What was, what was Peter Levy, what would you not want to normally do? I missed that.
Walk such a distance to, by tennis.
Victoria's going to jump in, she's, she's a big tennis player. But you're a walker, Victoria, so I'm going to discount that right off the fact if you're going to say you were going to walk.
What's the distance to the tennis court?
Well, you have to go around that path. Can you throw it up again, Patrick, so she can see it?
Well, you're traversing, you know, a 19-acre lot. So it's, it's going to take some time to get from one place to the other.
And you can't go in a straight line.
Right.
So you have a path that goes, and then Pat just run the path. So you come out from your house and you go all the way around that? Or you come out from your house and you go down the front, but you're kind of in the street there?
But how far is it? I mean, from that bottom house, it's not very far. From the bottom, very far, from the bottom three houses, it's not very far.
No, it's not. But you're talking about the same people who, the same town that doesn't ever want us to eliminate a parking space in front of a store.
No, 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 no. How, no, people, I mean, three of these, two of these houses will probably play tennis. And they'll probably play once, I mean, if you get someone who plays every morning, that might be one house. I mean.
But are they gonna?
Nick had a good point, I mean, how much will this tennis court?
So now your friend is.
Some distances, is it a 10-minute walk or a five-minute walk or a 20-minute?
There you go.
If it's a 20-minute walk, well, they won't want to.
I mean, I look at this and I know that, you know, my sense is people are going to, are going to drive it a lot of the time.
Certainly they have. Know how long it takes.
Right, but it's just telling you. So anyway, coming back to it, knowing how, if you could time it and tell us roughly how long the walk is, that's great. But we keep having this conversation about people never wanting to even walk half a block to something that they're going to, and we would.
Why do you not have bicycles?
I would love to see something that is, that is more oriented to having it, everything be together and clustered. And I would be okay with changing the distances between the buildings. Because that's the whole point of having a cluster. And if we're not clustering enough, then tell us.
And I'll just, I'll just jump into, I think my concerns are, we're, we're moving it towards the property line for environmental reasons, but it's still within the review area. So that's not so great. Number two, Section 623(c) says to preserve and maintain the existing character and setting the site and to preserve vistas and streetscapes. You've got a wonderful vista there, you've given it to all your houses and you all have done a terrific job on this plan. But I think it'd be even better if you didn't have any accessory buildings, tennis courts on that side of the property. And I think it would be just as marketable, if not more marketable. Because not everyone plays tennis. If these people are dropping $2 to $3 million on a house, they're going to hop in their car and go to Tamrac Club. Or if they want to play golf, they're going to go to Griff Harris. They do not lack for recreational opportunities. So I, I think you're giving them something they, they may not use at all. Particularly, if you put it here, they are not going to use it much. And you're really going to disturb your neighbors on the other side who are part of the Gimbel family. And they've been very generous to the town. They've given like 50 acres between, to Audubon and to the Mianus River Gorge, the Gimbel family. And I think maybe there's some historical memory here that we should keep in mind. That's my two cents.
Okey dokey. I think, I think everybody's kind of on the same page, except Victoria would like to know the distances before she commits.
But it would make more sense to put the tennis court on the opposite corner at the, you know, opposite the first house from just the legislative point of view.
Do we have room on the next agenda? Or do we have to see all of these things that postponed and withdrew? We've got some room?
Wait, we can, we can move things around.
This is a final, correct, still?
Yeah.
Yeah, but they can convert it.
To preliminary and we'll keep moving?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Hegney, just briefly, your discussions with DPW on the driveway, how's that going?
So we had what I thought was a constructive, very helpful meeting with Scott Marucci. Andrew and I had that, Andrew put together a proposal that Scott is reviewing with Jim Michael and Amy Seibert. And I did ask him, since this meeting was coming up, if he had had an opportunity to have that discussion. He had not, but was going to reach out to them. So we were proposing to meet the town standard for the first 200 feet, where there are two driveways that service other homes that access off the same drive. And then to reduce the amount of coverage by keeping the driveway 18 feet wide the rest of the way and keeping the cul-de-sac itself at a reduced size that would allow for truck movements, but not be meeting the town standards with the understanding that there are only five houses on this driveway.
So there's, no, no increase in the, in the right-of-way?
Right, we're looking to maintain it at 18 feet wide rather than making it 22 feet wide.
And we can do that, right?
The Commissioner, the Commissioner of Public Works can do that.
So we could try to get.
Proposed that to them.
Yeah.
And it would be helpful if they heard from you to say that you would encourage that. Certainly the Wetland Agency and the Conservation Commission are also encouraging that. And, and as part of our discussion with Scott, Scott says that where we can reduce impervious coverage, we want to do it. So it wasn't that, well, it has to be 22 feet wide. This will never be dedicated as a public street. This is going to be maintained as a private road.
Right, and that 18 feet is all the way right to the cul-de-sac at the end?
Yes.
18 feet.
Right.
Okay, we're still waiting for, for the commissioner to opine on the street. So that's one more thing we have to add to the, you know, we're waiting for something else. So we do have some time to kind of, I'd like to get the bottom line of that and say yes or no from the Commissioner, Public Works.
So, and to go back to the text, to the, to the text amendment stuff. Mr. Hegney, really, really happy with where you've gone directionally. The comments from the other agencies are excellent. Really, really happy where this is going because I spoke with staff this afternoon and was saying, I'm just not seeing this as being environmentally sufficiently conservation-oriented. But as soon as you started talking about the new language for the regulation, I got comfortable. I don't, I mean, I would have almost, and it's not your job, I would have almost made more changes to the text amendment because I find it a very confusing regulation. And the environmental benefit is supposed to be that if you put all the houses close together, you really put them close together, you get a greater benefit because you have even greater green areas. And you're trying to do that. But in any event, I think you're headed in the right direction, absolutely. And I know it's been a huge labor for you, nine meetings into it. Sometime we'll have to trade notes.
Who's counting?
Who's counting? Yes, I'm sure that there's other, other stories you can tell like that. But we would, I would certainly appreciate for sure that you try to consider how you could reconfigure this so that you could get everything together as best you can. And then.
We certainly are hearing the comments that are being made this evening. And we'll see how we can work that in with this, this particular site.
We should have been clearer with you because I think we kind of were uncomfortable with the tennis court from the beginning. But at that time, you were talking to Wetlands and we wanted to see what they said. Now, if the commission doesn't have anything to add, there's one person from the public with their hand up.
Just, just really quickly, I want to make sure I've got, got this right, Mr. Hegney. 623, 623(c) is going to be no change. That's how it's going to be proposed, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, and then 626, that will change from 50 to 10 acres?
Yes.
Okay, and then 630 is the setback that's going to remain?
Well, that's what we've been spending the last few minutes discussing.
No, 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 I just, right now, that's, okay, up for grabs.
Up for grabs because if they don't need it, well, Wetland suggested that you consider that you put the reduction in for future applicants. And that's okay. The only thing that I would throw into that is maybe some more specific language other than environmental benefit. Katie, I'm thinking if it is of a benefit that the Conservation Commission or Wetlands or somebody have identified for the greater set, have referred to the commission.
There are standards that, I'm just remembering, there's the purpose statement, the standards is in the beginning of that section that kind of lists. Stuff, so maybe you could refer back to that section.
Perfect, that's a great idea, yes. Good idea, okay.
Okay, and 631, the percentage is no change there?
Right, no change.
Okay, great, thank you.
Right.
Madam Chair, I just want to put out there, because I think everyone was saying it was confusing in terms of the either FAR benefit for conservation zone or perhaps a step down in the zoning for cluster housing. It was clear, did the step down work for cluster housing? Or was it due to other factors that you could have a step down? I think the applicant is looking to put five houses here. You know, so obviously they're looking to get more than the minimum of, you know, four acres on the, on the property. So, Mr. Hagney, were you assuming there was a step down from, you know, RA4 to RA2 because you're going the cluster route? Is that your assumption?
Well, I was looking frankly at it being 4.7 houses that it would be rounded to five.
Okay, okay.
Well, and actually, Katie and I had that discussion earlier this afternoon. And I said, well, a point of a house is not a house, but okay. I was having the opposite argument with her. I'm like, but Katie, you can't have half a house, so you have to round down. So, all right, okay, let's go to the public then. And our first speaker, getting you, is Ashley. And if you would kindly, as I promote you, would you kindly spell and say your last name for the court reporter? And the next speaker after that is Andy Dedecam or Deedcam. And Ashley, if you would unmute, say your last name, it's, oh, you just remuted. There you go, perfect. And if you would say and spell your last name for our court reporter?
Yes, ma'am, my married name is actually Portier. It's like Porter with an I in the middle, P-O-R-T-I-E-R.
Thank you, ma'am. And if you would, go ahead.
Yes, ma'am. I am living in the house right in front, here's the tree frogs from our backyard.
Lovely.
Obviously, I'm, I'm the friend of the Lorax, good to see you again. I don't know exactly how this works, but I have a few concerns. The street lights proposed, this is a very important wildlife corridor with things such as fox, opossums and lynx. So I think street lamps would really do an injustice to the, to the wildlife. Also, I'm extremely surprised if, if you're able to get the driveway that wide based on how thin it is right now and that it is hugged on either side by waterways and wetlands. I'm also very concerned about access to the GRTA and the Audubon Trails, which have been important for this town for, you know, since its conception. You used to be able to take the GRTA, Greenwich Riding Trail Association, trails all the way down to Mamaroneck and further. And now they're starting to get, you know, disappearing. And this is an important one that we need to maintain. I'm also the property that's proposed to be right where the tennis court is going to be touching, which obviously is a lot of bother to me. I also would ask if anybody has an email address that I can send some pictures to last time it rained. Pretty much the, the place that they're proposing to put the tennis court was covered in water.
Okay, so let me just stop you right there. If you look at Katie DeLuca, see her name right there?
Yes, ma'am.
You, you make it all one word, Katie DeLuca, and you put, it's @GreenwichCT.org. And if you get desperate, you go on the town website and it says, contact the town planner.
I think it might be Katie.Deluca.
Katie.Deluca, sorry, Katie.Deluca.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
On the lighting, let me start answering you just on the lighting, since you brought it up. The lighting goes before our Architectural Review Commission. I don't, I don't have tree frogs, I've got barking dogs right now, so I'm going to just keep going. The, that goes before our Architectural Review Commission. And you can find when they're going to meet. I, I can't, is it an?
They're ready.
They did, but it doesn't say if they're a return. But here's what they said, they required the applicant to minimize the light spillage and glare. They specified that no lighting around the tennis court. And they have requested the specs of all the lights to get the actual height of the fixtures and the light posts. So they're on it. And they're going to minimize the disturbance to the natural environment. So on the lighting, we're good, they'll work on it. And your next concern was you.
Access to the GRTA and Audubon.
Okay, and by when you say access, whose access do you mean?
It's public access and it's included in one of the Audubon books on trails and Greenwich and surrounding areas.
Okay, so Mr. Hegney, you will address that public access and, and make sure that it remains.
And I would, I would like to mention.
I don't believe it's public access, but.
It is in, I can once again send a picture of the Audubon pamphlet that has it included. We have also noticed that they've started putting large rocks in the way of those access, public access works. And I, I believe they're doing that in purpose to try to make them disappear.
Okay, well, we'll need to research. Mr. Hegney just said that it may not be illegal public access, so he will need to document that for us. They may be trying to block the part that's on their private property. But Mr. Hegney, we'll have to look into that.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very, yes, ma'am.
There's also, yeah, sorry, one more thing. The other concern I have is there's very many, almost a dozen, very old, 100-plus-year-old trees. I heard that we were going to try to save one of them, and that's great. But there's so many, and I believe that anybody who wants a multimillion-dollar mansion would also appreciate a multi-generational tree. And I wish that they would take those into consideration instead of planting 15-year-old trees to look at the beautiful ones that are already there.
Okay, I think the Conservation Department's on that and that they're going to look at what trees can be preserved, but we will check it as well.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Andy Dedecam, or I'm not sure, I'm just going to bring him in and. And sir, if you would, go ahead. There you go, you're unmuted, go ahead.
Hi, I'm owner of the property 1145, 1147 King Street. And we do have stables on the property and always had access to the Greenwich Riding Trails from Hope Solinger, the former owner of the property. And we entered the riding trails from the Gimbel High Road, they call it, which is the double stone wall, which is now being kind of taken down from, to have that circular driveway, the driveway's coming through it. The access from Greenwich Woods Health Center, it's a 50-wide, 55-wide right-of-way that enters the sanctuary and the riding trails in the northeast section in between the Sacred Heart and the 1141 property. Uh, that, as Ashley had just mentioned a moment ago, has been closed off with, uh, large boulders. Um, and considering that the way we used to enter the trails is now not going to be uh, accessible, uh, through the double stone wall. Um, I was hoping to be able to somehow get my horses off of my property, and I would even break a hole in, in the wall in between eleven forty-seven and the eleven forty-one property. Um, I could break, uh, you know, through the, through the stone wall and maybe ride along the, the, the wall to the right of way in order to get to the trails.
So what you've been doing, I'm just looking at Google Earth, what you've been doing is you've been coming through the back of your property.
We've been actually coming out the side towards the, towards the back of the property, onto the driveway.
Yep.
And then entering where the double stone wall is.
Okay, yeah, I'm not seeing that. Um, okay.
That's
Can you bring up, can you bring up a site plan? I think it might be on one of those.
One, two, three, four, five. It, it comes up, it's, uh, indicated on one of those site maps in between, I think it's three and four houses, three and four. Um, it's right next to one of those, uh, turnarounds. It's on the east side of the property.
It's between three and four.
Yeah, see the, uh, the note that says, uh, for approval only, I think right next to that is where it is. Mr. Row.
I'm not seeing that language, Nick, I'm sorry.
Uh, in the, in the title block, uh, for approval only, not for construction. Down, down, right there, right to the, yeah, keep going, that's it. Right there, zooming right there, there's, there's a double wall.
That is correct. That's, that's where we used to enter the Greenwich Riding Trails.
So what you're saying, you, you would actually go onto the driveway of the existing house, right up to that point, and then onto the trails?
Well, we've actually been told that we're not going to be able to do that by the, uh, the new landowner.
And, and the trails you're referring to, are they, um, they're that massive property basically on the other side of this property that's
Correct, on the east side.
Yeah.
Now, there is.
An official GRTA trail, or?
Yes, yes, it is. And Audubon, and it's, uh, also part of the Gimbel Sanctuary.
Right.
And, and so you, what you're saying is your access has been through this property, and now it's being blocked off?
Correct. Now, the other, the other access to that is on the north east side, or the, the northern side, all the way up at the top. There's a fifty foot wide right of way that goes from the edge, the eastern edge of the eleven forty-one property, all the way out to King Street. But we can't bring our horses onto King Street in order to catch that, that entrance. So we were actually hoping that we might be able to follow the back of our property, the, the stone wall that goes, um, all the way up to the nursing homes and enter that way. But of course, like, like I mentioned, the, they put big boulders to kind of continue the stone wall in between eleven forty-one and the, and the sanctuary property.
Are these, are these, um, privately owned horses? I mean, is this like your own personal recreational thing, or is this a commercial, a commercial thing where there's lots of horses every day?
Um, we, at this time, we have three horses, um, and it, it is a commercial.
Um, Madam Chair, this
Well, it's a private, it's a private property home, yes.
Yeah, right.
But you've got people who lease the horses essentially, or whatever. Yes.
We have private boarders.
Oh, okay, so your horses are boarding. Okay, got it.
Correct.
Got it.
I do remember this came up, Madam Chair, with respect to the GRTA trials, trails, excuse me, with the, um,
I'm trying to remember the application.
Doverton Drive is a Bruce Cohen, it was a conservation zone.
There you go, there you go.
It was the same thing where people were very upset that, that the trails were going, and, um, I think the applicant conceded and, and agreed to have the trails, um, you know, the access be maintained.
That's, that was kind of my memory as well. I remembered the event that the people were upset, and then there was a big discussion about liability.
Right, I think that, Mr. Hegney, I think you might have been involved in that one, actually, weren't you? Because I think you represented buyer.
I represent, I did represent the buyer. There was a proposed easement that was suggested, but that was not signed.
And so what ended up happening?
There, it, there's no formal right to access the trails through that property.
I thought we had fixed the problem. That's too bad. I didn't realize that it didn't get fixed.
There, there's a fifty foot easement. It's on all of them. It's, it actually shows on the
We're at a different property now, though. We were talking historically that this issue
I'm sorry, I, I apologize.
What Katie was remembering was that we came across this, we've come across this twice before, and there was another one that I don't remember, but I just remember that we've discussed access to the Gerda Trails before. Um, so, Mr. Hegney, is this something that you could work on?
It's certainly a conversation I can have with my client.
We can have a thirteenth and fourteenth meeting.
So, shouldn't it be in the deed? Shouldn't any easement be recorded in the deed?
May not be.
There, there is not an easement through this property.
In the olden days, before stuff was developed, people just went riding.
But it doesn't go through.
And you went, and you just went through, you knew your neighbors, and you crossed their property.
And they said fine.
And that's, I mean,
It was a handshake.
It was a common understanding, and I, I would suggest to Mr. Hegney politely that if he's trying to, uh, reduce the number of future meetings, let's get this done.
He doesn't want
Thank you for the suggestion, Mr. Wells.
Mr. Hegney, real quick question. Um, on the plans, there, in the, uh,
Hold on just a second, before you guys start, start going down your own, Mr.
No, no, this has to do with this.
Okay, but fix your microphone.
There is a note, uh, that references a right of way under, at, in book, uh, six ninety-nine, page five sixty-eight, or five sixty.
Oh, give this boy a gold star.
Is that, what, what, what is that right of way that goes, and it's actually, it, it follows the northern property line all the way across the top?
Correct.
That, that is, that, that's part of the Audubon property.
The right of way goes, goes, okay, is it fifty foot right of way from?
Right, that is not part of this property.
Really?
Really.
So why is the deed, why is the deed for it there, Mr. Hegney?
If, if you look at, uh, if we put the G I S map up.
Uh, which is What is, what is this line representing on your?
Yeah, what is that?
That's, that's owned by the Audubon.
So where's the property line?
Site. Property line is the line that runs parallel, you, you see the stone wall right there?
Yeah.
That, that is between the fifty foot right of way that's owned by the Audubon and the convent of the Sacred Heart. Our property line is the line parallel to that. Right, that's our, that's our property line, right there. We're, uh, so the, the walking path that we have, the boardwalk through the wetlands, that's running parallel to our northerly property line.
So, Mr. Hegney, the bouldering that was discussed, that I, I, I couldn't follow where it is. I'm imagining it's either here or here.
It's over. It's in the northeast corner of the property.
Uh, that was not installed by your client, because it's not on the property, therefore it's not.
No, it, it was changed.
I'm not sure whether that, that area
Mr. Dedekam, you have to talk to us, okay.
The fifty feet, uh, of the Audubon, or whether that's on my client's property. I, I, I couldn't tell. We'd, we'll have to look at the survey to determine that.
But I, I think the point that I'm, I guess I'm trying to understand for the neighbors is that your client isn't the one who put the impediments there, because it's not the property.
I, that, that I don't know. Um, you know, there's been some work done out there. Uh, and when I walked the property, I did notice where those large boulders were. Uh, we'll have, I'll have to go over that with, uh, with Andrew, and we'll look at the survey.
Well, I think, Madam Chair, I think it's important for the neighbors to know that this is a property not part of the subject proposal, and therefore, you know, their issues are with that owner, if that is the case. If they are, if they are in fact the ones who put the impediments there.
And who's, and, and this is, this, this is the, it does not make sense to me that the Audubon property would be putting boulders on a right of way.
I'm not, I'm not gonna
I mean, I'm just saying, this should be looked into.
I'm not gonna be, uh, Columbo here and try to figure it out, but I just, I think it's important to note that this is, that the applicant has no authority to do anything granting rights or taking away rights over here. So if there, if there is any impediments here, you know, I think uh, that we, the neighborhood needs to figure out if it's the Audubon and what the Audubon's doing about it.
Is, is that the area of the horse rider? Is that where you think you went, horse rider?
Mr. Dedekam, can you, can you answer that?
Yes, correct, it is.
Okay, so theoretically, I mean, that, if that's, if that's land owned by the Audubon, hopefully then you can maintain a path with them through there, but you're saying that once you get to the right hand side of the screen, the upper right hand corner, you can't get to where you used to go through the wall.
Correct. They added the, the large boulders.
Right, so you can get to the end, but you can't get through to, is there a way to, oh, that's what you're saying, you wanted to be able to get a hole in that wall so that you can just bypass the applicant's property altogether and just access the trails that way, right?
Well, c- correct, but, but again, because I used to, um, have a good relationship with the former owner, we used to come in through the double stone wall, but now we're gonna be coming, we're going to need to access the, the riding trails from in between the, the Sacred Heart property and the eleven forty-one property. But again, that's where they closed, closed up the wall.
Right, where the cursor is right now, basically.
Correct, yes.
And who's they? That must be the Audubon, right?
No, it's, it's, I'm afraid to say it was the new property owner.
Well, the, the boulders are recently, recently installed.
Yes, that's what he's been saying, and he thinks it's, and Mr., and then the answer, Mr.
Discuss that with my client.
Okay, good. That would be great, Mr. Hegney. So I think there's a mystery here that you can solve for us. Um, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Dedekam, just in case we talk to you again, can you pronounce your last name for us, so I don't keep wondering?
Dedekam is fine, yes, thank you.
Okay, so, um, if, that's it for your comments, right?
Um, yes, and I appreciate your time.
Great, thank you very much, sir. All right, so that's all the comments we have from the public. I think, um, there's clear direction here. We need to figure out the Skerta access. Um, who put the boulders out, figure out the driveway with, we would be happy to intercede on, you know, to, um, to write to the DPW Commissioner, Katie, if that's any help, once we get far enough down the road on the driveway widths, we would be glad to support you, but one of the, um,
That would be very helpful, Madam Chair.
Okay.
And maybe revise, go ahead.
Good. I, I, I wanted to mention that, uh, Chip Haslin represents the Chieftain's, uh, Homeowners Association, and, uh, I have been sharing, he reached out to me and wanted, uh, copies of the plans. I have provided those to him. Uh, he, he indicated that they did not have a, a, uh, a, a specific objection uh, to what we're proposing here.
I wonder, Madam Chair, to suggest, uh, obviously there'll be a new site plan coming, but if it, if it could more clearly delineate the property that we're talking about, because this is totally confusing. I mean, I think all of us assumed the top part of it was part of the applicant's property, but clearly it's not. It's very unclear as to what amount, what land this property actually owns. I mean, the, the survey's very confusing, as we just found out.
I think Mr. Wells is right. I think, you know, it can be clarified with simple meets and bounds and some standard, um, surveying techniques that, uh, you know, there's
Or just a boulder line, just give us a boulder line and faint lines where it's not on your property.
We could certainly do that.
Mr., um, we combined the, the two applications, right, so we can
All three.
Yeah, so, Mr. Hegney, on the site plan, the, the green, when you calculated the green area, did you use the entire parcel, or did you just use the parcel that's not the open space parcel?
Uh, since Andrew did that calculation, I will ask him to answer that question.
We use the, we use the entire parcel.
Okay, so then, could you, for, when you come back, could you calculate what the green area is on just the parcel that you're developing, not the entire parcel?
So subtract the sixty percent conservation area?
Yeah, get rid of that, and then just find out what the green area is on the parcel that you're, that you're developing, the development parcel.
Yes.
You know, the driveways, the, the, uh, all of that.
We could provide that, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So, um, Mr. Hegney, um, you would, um, convert to preliminary?
Oh, actually, I thought we had sent in some, uh, extensions.
Maybe you did.
Uh, to get, because I, I knew that we couldn't vote on this one way or the other, because we don't have wetland approval yet, uh, which I'm anticipating at the, uh, March twenty-eighth meeting. So I thought I had provided an extension at least to the next meeting, uh, if not beyond that.
If you haven't, if you would
If not, I certainly will.
Yeah. Okay, and then, um, the other ones, you're okay. Um, you, you can go to the twenty-second of April on both of them, but on the site plan, you know, no, no, they're all the same. You've got to go to the twenty-second of April. Okay.
Yeah.
Alrighty.
I'll, I'll confirm, I, I thought we had sent over the extensions, at least through the end of March.
So you had mentioned that Mr. Haslin is, is involved with this application, correct?
Uh, he, we have been, uh, speaking, and I've sent him copies of the plans.
He has his hand up. So I am assuming
He can be a member of the public, too.
All right, all right. Uh, Mr. Haslin, are you here to speak on eleven forty-one? Oh, I don't think he can hear me, yeah, on eleven forty-one King?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good, because I was done with the public. You just lucked out that we
Yeah, no, I had my hand up since Tom mentioned my name, and I, I know my clients and chieftains are listening to or watching. Um, and, and Tom's generally right. I mean, he's been providing information all along the way, and it's a very long, uh, process. And I think my clients, the chieftains, are, are generally happy with, of all the possible developments that you could have on this property, generally happy with the layout and the way it's come together, um, and it seems to complement the chieftains for the most part. There, uh, would have preferred to have the road put on the other side of the property, but for reasons, um, that Thomas made clear to me, that can't happen, um, because of the wetlands, because of the Audubon, et cetera. They are happy with keeping the road, the width that it currently is, and not expanding it, or no, no bigger than eighteen feet, put it that way. Um, that maintains kind of the country rural aspects of it, and, uh, will cut down speed, et cetera. They do have some concerns about, um, security on the property, and Thomas indicated the security gate, it will be unmanned, but we'd like to know a little bit more about that. They have concerns about Saturday construction, and maybe, uh, reducing some of the hours, but again, that's something Tom and I can work out. Um, they would like to see more landscaping along their common property boundary if possible, and, um, I, oh, and they, Tom assured me that the houses would all be built at the same time, which is something they were concerned about, having development going on for months and months and years and years, so that was a, a positive, too. So, generally speaking, yes, Tom's been, uh, as always, um, very forthright with me and, and sharing information, et cetera, but I did think, I did think it was necessary for me to share, uh, some of my clients' concerns that we think we can work out with the developer and Tom.
Okay.
Right.
All right, okay, thank you then.
Thank you.
All right. I'm gonna say goodbye to you.
Uh, you can keep me up for the next one if you want.
Okay, we'll keep you up for the next one. Okay, all right, so I'm gonna say goodbye, and thank you for your patience, everybody. I know sometimes it's a long haul. All right. So I'm gonna say goodbye and thank you for your patience, everybody. I know sometimes it's a long haul, but we are trying to, and we really do appreciate that you're giving us your best effort to give us a good outcome here. Um, now, um, I have to tell Mr. Haslin that although, um, I'm leaving him on the meeting, it has been requested that we take a break.
Oh, no.
That's why I was gonna demote you and you're like, oh, no, I'll stay. So but, uh, folks, how about we make it a shorter than normal break? Cause we shouldn't have that much longer to go tonight.
No more than fifteen minutes.
Fifteen minutes it is.
Fifteen minutes it is.
See you shortly.
So, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
I'm here. I think we're done with the.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. You could, yes, you're, you're off that, Mr. Seal.
All right, thanks. As much as I wanted a break, I guess I'll just take a really long break.
We'll, we'll struggle without you, but thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Hey, Pat.
Yes, sir.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. Do you see, um, Chris McGag in the audience by any chance? Um, I asked that, um, Mike, uh, Michael, Michael Icheck be brought up as a, but I don't know if you saw my message, but, um.
I did. I see, I see Mike. Uh, there's Chris. I see, yep.
Yeah, I think rather than Michael Duke, Chris instead.
You want Chris on and, and, and to speak, you said?
Yeah, and Scott, and Scott Kloster, who's the GM, who I indicated earlier, he should be on there, too.
Sure.
Okay, thanks a lot, Pat. Appreciate it.
No problem.
Pat, it's Chris McGag.
Hi, Chris.
I'm not, I'm trying to start my video, but it's cycling. It says you've started screen sharing.
Uh, right. You're, you're, you're looking at the, um, screen share right now, so.
But am I up? Is my video up? Oh, there I am. Okay, sorry. Yep. Oh, my gosh. Good thing I saw that. I need to.
Are we all back?
Okay, are we all back? Victoria, are you there? Peter Levy? You're there? Peter Lowe, are you back? Okay, so we're waiting for Peter Lowe. Peter Lowe, say when you're here. We're back to running kindergarten again. I'm taking attendance now. All right, next step.
You're herding cats. That's what it is.
I have thought often about hurting you guys, yes. But what would I do without Peter Lowe's sense of humor?
It's boring.
Right, I'm calling.
Should I put that on the list? I guess I should put that on the list, right?
Because we, we've like beat it so badly.
Okay.
You're late. Is this pro bono?
Sorry.
Mr. Haslin?
They give you free tennis balls once a month.
Yeah, they give you free tennis balls. Okey dokey, everybody. So now we are going to go to our discussion items, which is item fourteen. We have two of them. The first one is the Millbrook Club, Inc., uh, for a pre-app, uh, to discuss removal of the existing one and a half story tennis court and other changes. It's at sixty-one Woodside Drive in the R twenty. And Mr. Haslin, if you would go ahead.
Yes, good evening again, Madam Chair. Uh, for the record, Chip Haslin, uh, from Johnson Haslin and Hogerman for the Millbrook Club. With me tonight is Scott Kloster, who's our extraordinary capable general manager and Chris McGag from Rogers McGag Architects. This is a project to replace tennis, uh, a very small tennis uh, house that was built in the nineteen nineties and wasn't built particularly well. Um, the idea is to replace what is really for, uh, utility purposes, just one story with a two-story structure and to expand the patio surrounding a little bit with some landscaping details, um, et cetera. Uh, Mr. Mackey, uh, asked yesterday, uh, what a tennis simulator looked like. Um, I, I looked at the application and it occurred to me that we never actually did mention what kind of simulator this is. This is actually golf simulators that would be on either end, which I think you're all familiar with and they're very popular now with other clubs in town. Um, and, uh, so we've decided to incorporate that into what we look at being on the second story as really a, um, uh, multiple, multipurpose room. Um, yeah, the, the second story plan is probably the best one to look at while we're talking about things.
So Mr. Haslin, this is a mixed-use development?
Yes, no, it's all club. Um, all club related. And, uh, we also have a, a reading group that likes to meet. So we thought that that could be, uh, uh, a useful space for that group, uh, yoga, um, uh, committee meetings, things like of that nature that could always use the second floor. Um, and again, the, the bottom floor would just be the tennis shop. Um, you raised the issue of that staircase between the two buildings, the existing building and the proposed building. Um, that would remain as an open staircase. It exists there now. The, uh, members are all familiar with it and they know how to use it to get up to the back patio area. Uh, the buildings weren't connected because there's actually on the second floor of the main building to the north is our bar. And that has some really lovely windows, um, behind the bar that look out to the north and we didn't want to close off the light coming into the main building. Um, and in addition, the architect, and Chris can speak more fully to this, uh, felt that we wanted to maintain the relationship between the two buildings, the larger clubhouse and this, this, um, smaller tennis house um, in this configuration. And, uh, tend that we successfully were able to do that by continuing to maintain the the stairwell between the, uh, the two buildings. Um, fairly straightforward application. Uh, we, uh, we think it's very, um, in keeping with the main buildings, the same architectural design. We're hoping that, uh, he might let us there for when we file for final, also file for ARC at the same time, so that we can hopefully be heard by them before he comes to you. It's not a big building. It's not really any issues at all. I don't believe it's just, and as I said, the architecture is pretty much the same as the main building. It is the same. So, uh, that's really, uh, what we have before you. And, um, open to questions.
Quick questions for you. Uh, you, um, I've not been on your property when you had, after you had a bad storm and all the flooding. I'm assuming that you were gonna be pretty close to having a drainage exemption on this.
Yes.
Would you, what is there?
Uh, wait, 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 let's, uh, drainage exemption, but you're adding patio and you're adding deck and the building is twice the size?
It's twice the height. It's, it's two stories instead of one and a half. You're adding height. Are they adding more than the, than the, than the drainage exemption amount?
I don't know. That's a good question. That's a good question.
What I'm asking. I said they're pretty close. I don't know if they exceeded or not.
I don't.
Regardless, go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think there's a distinguished, it's a, it's a two D number, Mr. Mackey. So whether the building is two floors or one.
Yep.
It would.
Oh, no, no, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just looking at, at the before and after, the footprints that are provided, other drawings and, uh, thirteen hundred fifty square foot patio.
Yeah, Tony DeAndrea assures me that it's gonna end up being washed by the time he's done with his design. So you will note that in the, in the pre-app, I did not actually indicate coverage uh, for the building or for the lot, anticipating that he was gonna get me those numbers and that those would actually comport with what he saw me. So we should be fine.
So I'm assuming that Mr. Kloster has thought about this a great deal, as have you, since I believe you know this place well. With the flooding that you experienced there, are you taking any opportunity or will it, are, are you not close enough to what your worst areas that you could? I'm just asking if you're gonna do anything to address your situation with flooding as you make this improvement? Because the last time I saw you flooded was after the last set of improvements you'd done. And I didn't think it had gotten a lot better. And I know it's hard for you as, for the club, Mr. Kloster. Um, and I'm just asking, this is a situation where I think the drainage exemption is a, not a good thing for the applicant.
We don't really drain in this area or have any flooding issues in this area. It's really on the other side, on the, on the eastern side of the street.
Yeah, I know. I mean, I know where you fly. I mean, I've seen when you have that swimming pool in your yard, that long lake that you get. But I'm just saying, is there anything you could do to improve your stormwater management as you're doing this building? And, and, and to not focus on a drainage exemption, because it may be helpful to you. And if it's not, it's not, but I've just thrown it out there.
Well, we're constantly trying to, uh, deal with, you know, drainage issues and make them better. And I think we've gone a long ways in the past ten years or so and continue to do so. But, uh, we'll certainly have Tony take a look at it and see if there's anything else we could tweak on this. But it's really not a problem on this side of, of the street.
Mr. Kloster, you started to say something.
I'm sorry, Scott.
Yes, the, um, several years ago, we came in front of, um, wetlands in the town for the proposal on the, out on the golf course, uh, addressing, uh, subsurface drainage and, uh, and we worked with the town. And, um, that has subsequently, um, eliminated the, um, ponding that has happened on our golf course. We're able to drain that area even with all the runoff from Indian Field Road that we, all day on a seeding water that comes on, that we can't control. Uh, we're able to de-water the golf course now within twenty-four hours. So it has been a complete game changer for us. All of that water is contained in piping and then runs under into system. So we, um, on this side of the property, we don't have that same, uh, flooding as, as Haslin pointed out. So I think we're gonna be okay because of the work we've done previously.
Okay. Um, that was a main question I had about this. I had another, um, anybody else have questions, comments? Mr. Lowe?
No, I, I was just about to say, I, I have, I appreciate, um, that you might be, uh, seeking to, um, a, address other issues here, but with, within the scope of this application, it doesn't seem as though from my reading and listening that, um, that, that flooding is an issue and, uh, and therefore, um, on, on that, on the side of things where, where they are. And, uh, so I, I don't, I don't see it being, I don't see it being an issue. That doesn't mean that Millbrook doesn't have flooding potential issues, but for the purposes of this application, I, I think I can appreciate that, uh, it, it's a non-issue here, it, it, within the limited scope of what we're dealing with. Is that, is that, you agree, Mr. Haslin, I'm thinking?
I do completely.
Yeah.
Uh, Mr. DeAndrea.
Hi, good evening. I have been listening, um, and the chairman just, um, promoted me to panelist. I thought, I would make a comment to add a little bit to what Scott said. And it did that, the, the reality of it is that the club still provides the storage that's necessary so as not to inundate downstream conditions out on the fairway. And after the storm subsides and the water starts to recede, then they can reclaim their, um, fairways sooner than later. And that's been a real big improvement based on that system that has been installed. In regard to the area around the, the tennis, um, and golf pavilion, the, um, area behind the building is all ledge. And what they're proposing to do is just surface the ledge, um, level it out, smooth it off and place a, um, a patio on top. So the runoff coefficient doesn't change. And I'll be reviewing that with, um, you know, Scott Marucci to confirm. But that's the idea. Take the ledge away, smooth it out, put the flagstone on top, and really nothing changes in the coefficient. We also have some room in the front that we preserve for a small rain garden to add a little bit of positive water quality treatment within a rain garden, which is basically already there. So there will be some improvements made in the water quality and no increase in runoff.
Do I have any other questions from the commission? Do I have any comments from the public on this application? Nope. Okay, so that was the only significant question I had for you. I assume you're not increasing, Mr. Haslam, Mr. Kloster. You're not increasing your membership or anything like that, right?
No.
To serve the existing.
Yeah, it's about retention too. We lose about ten to fifteen percent a year as do all clubs. And it's really just always trying to attract new members to maintain the membership. So no, we're not increasing it.
Exactly what he said.
Interesting. Is it, some of it is that people move away, they age out, they, and you're not getting a replacement of that? You don't automatically get a replacement of that anymore?
It's just pretty much par for the course, as I understand it. Scott can talk more about it, but I know all the G M's talk, and that's pretty much what you lose every year in every club. So we're competing against each other to a certain extent too, but you just have to provide amenities all the time. And it's interesting, things like book clubs, who would have thought? But it's very popular. People really find that part of the enjoyment of belonging to a club in the community. So you're always looking for ways to improve the membership's amenities.
Typical attrition in a club on an annual basis is between three and five percent nationwide. That'll ebb and flow. Certainly, all of us post-COVID are very full. So those numbers are down a little bit right now because our clubs are so full and most of us have a waiting list of some sort. Ours is not super material, but it is material for us. But that's kind of where we're at.
Because we had the influx of new residents.
Yes, absolutely.
Is the historic figure of three to five percent attrition, is that been, has that, is that changed in the last ten, fifteen years, or is it always been that way?
It has always been that way.
And you just normally had a three, five percent that was coming in the door at the same time, so you broke even.
Fifteen to twenty leaving and fifteen to twenty coming, yeah.
And it was the fifteen to twenty coming in that reduced in the last ten years?
Correct. That was probably the biggest thing when we, after two thousand and eight, we saw a little bit of dip in that. And then in the recent years with the real estate market in town, especially in the last number of years, that has I think expanded everybody's membership rolls.
Interesting. Okay. And then, Commissioner, if you're wondering why we ask so many questions about clubs staying in business? Open space. They are open space.
That's true.
And they count as our open space. So a club that stops being viable and sells out, A, it's a shame, but also it affects the town's open space plan.
Yeah, and I apologize if I misspoke as to the percentage. I must have missed it.
That's all right.
I do that, yeah.
You know, it's a ballpark number.
Right.
And this is Mr. Kloster's work.
Right. Would it be possible to apply to the A R C at the same time we apply for finals to this so that we can move that a bit?
We normally wait to see how much Nick grumbles.
I know.
Well, you should address Mr. Mackry.
I really was, but.
If he grumbles really a lot, we will give in, but sometimes, you know, we'll overrule him if we're cranky.
Well, it's usually because, it's usually because somebody asks whether they can do it before it comes. But if it's coincident, as Mr. Haslam is suggesting, I'm guessing Nick is neutral on this.
Just be aware, his microphone is not working, so the grumbling may sound a lot less than normal.
Perfect. Wait, let me pull this around. Grumble, grumble, grumble. Mr. Haslam? I would normally say no, just to be clear about that. But I understand this, and the architecture is going to match the existing. And the site plan is part of, you know, the site plan is very tucked away. And there's really not much more you can do with this because you're so having been on both the waterside, the tennis courts and others. So in this particular case, I think it would be okay for you to go to A R C concurrently with P and Z.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. I take note of the fact that you said in this particular case.
Because he doesn't want to lose the opportunity to be hard on you in the future. Right.
Run away, run away.
Definitely want you to, you know, look at lighting with them.
Yes.
You know, and that's really, again, it's a Millbrook issue. It's not, I don't think the lighting pinches on anybody on my side of Indian Field. Mr. Lowe and I live very close to you.
I don't appreciate you dragging me into your rhetorical issues.
But I think just the lighting issue, just that you investigate that with A R C, that's the key. And again, and Mr. DeAndrea thinks he's doing well with the drainage, but I still think it's always worth.
It's a relative, it's a relative issue, given that people who live in the neighborhood sometimes have the opportunity to have waterfront property.
Well, it's also true that the properties on the eastern side of Indian Field Road drain onto the fifth fairway at Millbrook. So if you know anybody that lives over there, that's.
I don't.
We don't. We don't know anybody. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So we'll see you when you come back.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
And we have Mr. Mackry on record. Goodbye, Mr. Kloster. Thank you. Goodbye, Mr. DeAndrea. All right. So then our last discussion item is Greenwich Park LLC. For the pre-app discussion, you guys got to tell me again what the gym is called.
It's called.
Wait, wait, wait. Oh, there's John Tessie. I forget to get, I forgot to get public comment on the last one, but you know what? There's nobody left, so we're good. Hello, Mr. Tessie.
Guess I'm the nobody that's left, huh?
Well, we're assuming that you don't want to talk about the last application.
Good guess. Let me put a sound a little bit for you. Sorry. Here we go. Oh, sugar, what did I do?
Lucy didn't curse.
Yeah. It is Barry's Boot Camp is the name of the. As I don't know if everyone, but probably some of you went on the website of Barry's. It's quite an interesting program he has there. We've been, well, we, I should say, Mr. Ferrari and his team have been working with Barry actually for over a year or so on coming onto the Greenwich Park campus. And we're successful in their negotiations, if you will. John looked at this very much as part and parcel of his vision for the campus, where we would put an active gym within the campus to a degree, like an amenity for the many office workers there. And also, yes, it would be an amenity. We look at it for his residential new construction, which would be not too far from this particular building, building number five, which you've all seen on the, seen on the survey in terms of the proximity there. I would fully appreciate that the overall concern always when the commission is looking at these class-oriented facilities, traffic, we've certainly talked about traffic over the last few years enough on the campus. We continue to have Collier as our consulting, you know, traffic and parking engineers. Parking is not going to be an issue in any respect, as we pointed out, we can't envision it. I think that the basic question is, we have, you have the classes going in, going out. The facility is set up where there could be up to what we call forty-five participants in a particular program. They tell us that on average, it's sixty percent utility. Forty-five, so that gets you around thirty, less than thirty on average cars coming in and coming out. But it's, I can appreciate that there is a concern during peak hours, morning and evening. I mean, I've been thinking about that, and I know you were discussing, you know, staggering. We do have the ten minutes.
You have the perfect, you have the perfect information base. You have Equinox. And you know, and you know, we had problems with the Equinox stagger.
I always remember Equinox and what the problem was. I don't know if you recall when we brought the Equinox here. I'll never forget this. When we brought him there, as head of operations, and we're actually still very pretty friendly. And when you were properly grilling him on what happened, he pointed out, I tell you, we use the model of Derry Inn and other, you know, affluent communities, and we never seen anything like Greenwich. Nobody leaves. They stay there whole morning. And so what happens is we get this congestion that we've never seen before. People are usually there an hour early. These people sign up for multiple classes. Anyway, I don't think that'll happen at Barry's, just by the very nature of what it is. It's more of a training center. There's no real socialization going on. There's a small juice bar, which is really meant for hydration more than anything else because it's a heavier workout. So you're not getting involved in a spinning type of class situation here or something like that. You have people who are pretty dedicated to workout programs. But I was thinking anyway about the issue of the, of the peak hours and was thinking maybe during those hours, when we come back with a formal application, we discuss with Barry, increasing the, you know, like between eight o'clock and nine o'clock, you know, peak morning hour or four-thirty and five-thirty. At night, you increase your separation between classes. Instead of being ten minutes, maybe it should be a longer period of time, just for assimilation period. Yeah, thank you, Pat. Putting this up there. But this is the conceptual plan that you see here. Large locker rooms because people, you know, you can see pretty large locker rooms, and they'll include showers because again, the type of workout that you're seeing here, you've got a small juice bar up on the right-hand corner there. No seats are really anticipated. It's more, and use their power, power meals, power drinks, whatever it is, you know, they all have. It's not large. And then you have your check-in area, and you'll have a lobby with, I think they'll have some benches in there, maybe, maybe some some chairs, but no TVs or other programs going on, no retail that we have at, you know, Equinox. I think it's a little bit, it is different than Equinox in a number of ways. It's just a more intense type of workout program.
Well, the reason that we were a little concerned, the two concerns, and you've just raised the second one, and you heard us talk about it, is you've got the new, you've got, so you've got housing going that's going in there, and your times, some of your peak times are gonna overlap. If you were only in the office park and it was the office you sold in, you'd be fine. But you may have some overlap because of the evening, everybody gets home from work, everybody goes to the, you know, and everybody's coming to the gym. So those were the things, and you did get a traffic person. But I think a bigger, a bigger question is really parking demand and just, you know, making sure that that flow works. And you've got great history because you've worked on Equinox a lot. I can't think of a better example for how to manage this. The other one, and I believe this was Mr. Hegney's application, not yours, is you remember how badly SoulCycle went?
Well, again, those are class, well, SoulCycle was underneath the faucet building, the round floor of the basement, I forget. And again, you get that situation where you have, you have a class coming in all at once, and you don't really have parking near. And I don't think it's it's not as a good example because you've got all public parking. You know, you have the parking spaces there and they get all filled up. So I can understand that. We, Office Park, we don't have, there's never gonna be a parking problem there. There just isn't. There's too many spaces, too many areas that are never even used, quite frankly.
Yeah.
And if you drive in, if you're going to, you know.
Yeah, but we've been dealing more and more, and you know this is a fact, that you can have a huge parking lot, but everybody goes to the exact same corner of that parking lot.
Yeah, but they have to find, they're gonna find parking on campus. Obviously, there's no public park, there's no parking on any streets there. Everything is gonna be confined within the campus. There's nowhere else to park in, in the campus. And so people have, it's kind of ironic that people will go to a gym, yet they don't want to walk two hundred feet to get to the gym, you know?
Yes.
They want to find it five hundred feet away.
Yes, we understand that.
So we understand that. I think the traffic staggering during peak hours makes a lot of sense. So you're not seeing, so you've got it staggered up. And I like that idea. It's my idea. But the, but you forced the thinking there that take a look at those peak hours and where can you ameliorate things? Which is what I'm gonna talk to them about. Talk more about traffic locations and show the plans.
So that's, those are my two questions. And it's just sort of, you figure out what you're gonna do. You've got both the exercise stations, you've got the classes, you've got the retail, you've got the snack, and you're gonna have to figure out what your parking demand is.
Sorry, there's no retailer. This program does not have.
Oh, I thought you had the little bits of accessories and things. Okay.
No, there may be some mire things, but it's all behind the counter side. It's not like Equinox. Now, we have to, we're proposing an addition on the southwest corner of the building. Not that close to Wetlands, but it's close enough where we're in the review area. So we, when we come back to you, we will come back to you once we've secured, to make sure we secured approval. Because there's an addition there. It's part addition, about thirteen hundred square feet, and then the rest of it is existing conditions in the building. But as I said earlier, Ferrari considers it, you know, an amenity, part of his vision for getting more communal in the west side. And we've talked about, you know, that, we talked about that with you a number of times during five eighty-one, five eighty-one, one in five hundred, West Plutum. And with the offices in that area, not only Mr. Ferrari's Office Park, you know, we have a number of other office buildings in the area.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, and we think, you know, people like to work out, people that go to work now in office buildings. I think every year you can see people just wanting to be more healthy, which is good.
Mr. Tessie, just so I can understand, the level of this proposal, this addition is at the same level as the adjacent new parking lot at five eighty-five?
Yes.
Okay, does the, five eighty-one, thank you.
Five eighty-one, you're great. Five eighty-five is the office building, which is on a ledge.
Does, does the, will the new space have access to the garage in the basement of building five?
Oh, no, not at all. There's no connection.
Okay, there's no connection. So basically, it's parking someplace other than building five's basement. So adjacent, because it's actually the five eighty-one parking lot is the closest.
No, five eighty-one will not be, five eighty-one would not be used for any commercial, you know, for any commercial parking. I'm answering your question correctly.
Okay, so I'm a member of the gym. I'm going there to work out. Where, where is it anticipated that I would park?
Well, it's on the other side of that building.
Okay.
We are, there are parking, but we'll show it all.
Okay, so yeah, I think this is, that's one of the things. I think it's, the orientation is very tricky with building five.
Yes.
Because you've got the garage underneath, the pond on one side and parking like in the front.
And then there's parking underneath the building too.
Right, so.
Well, we'll come up with, those are good, they are good questions because of the nature, you know, building five is a pretty large building. It's kind of T-shaped. But we'll demonstrate all, there you go. That's the basement they're showing the parking. So we'll there are molars listening, it's probably available. You may have thought of things that I.
Yes, he's listening. He's there.
If you go through the set of drawings, Pat, you'll see I included the existing plans for G O P five, which will show the tremendous amount of parking that's available on the lower level and mid-level, which the Barry space, being part of building five, the existing elevator cores and stair cores go down to that parking area and will allow. being part of building five, the existing elevator cores and stair cores go down to that parking area and will allow the Barry's user to, to come up and get into the space.
Okay. Well, I mean, and you guys know this story. You just got to make it convenient for people because you know how it goes otherwise.
Yeah, we, we also know people love to park in covered parking and walk out of their car into a stair and an elevator, preferably the elevator, to go up to one level to go work out.
Absolutely.
Imagine if I worked out, I'd do that too.
Could be your inspiration. You, you live, you, you work at the campus. Now there's no excuse.
John makes me park, uh, you know, not next to the door, so I gotta walk the extra 200 feet.
So, um, does the commission have, does the commission have any more questions?
Um, I, I think just actually, just, just so we understand when you come back. Um, uh, Mr. Leroy just had one of the drawings up that showed, uh, both sites at the same time. If you could provide one of those kind of cleared up a little bit, you can actually see, um, in relationship to what we just approved for five eighty-one and this new one. Uh, so we're all on the same page here because it's, the campus is large, but I think actually this is kind of tucked away in one little corner of one little, of the, building five, but it's adjacencies to the five eighty-one would be important to us.
Yeah, I could provide a, a clearer plan that takes off some of the layers of engineering. So it's a little more visual.
I was right in saying that we're, no commercial parking is going to be allowed on the five eighty-one. Right, residential has a.
Right. So in a sense, in a sense, if I lived at five eighty-one, I could wander across and go to the gym. If I lived in the other side of town, when I came here, I, I technically would need to park in the garage to go to the gym.
Yes.
The most logical. We can, uh, you know, we were talking earlier, you know, the application about signage. And when we come back, it may make sense if there's some concern about that, that we'd have signage, you know, appropriate signage restricting that five eighty-one parking to the residences, so.
Just curious, what is the idea behind the, uh, design intent of the addition?
To blend the architecture on five eighty-one into the existing Greenwich Office Building number five. Um, being cognizant that it's going to be very hard to match the brick in that proximity, we wanted to pull the materials, um, the newer materials from five eighty-one and incorporate them onto this addition. This tenant also doesn't have a huge desire for windows as the privacy of their member, they don't like the idea of someone standing outside looking in at them while they're working out. So trying to keep it more solid as well.
So Mr. Mulder, as, as I see it, it's, it's a, like a metal panel?
So the, the Trespa panels that are on five eighty-one is what we're incorporating here. I'm also incorporating a little bit of the wood tones from five eighty-one into here and pulling the color palette of the existing window and, um, perimeter unit metal into the color of the, the main body of the addition.
Uh, are you gonna, are you sacrificing the PTAC units, um, in the second floor of, of building five there?
Yes. We, one of the reasons for the addition is required ceiling height for the Barry's program. So in order to achieve that, which is why we have the workout studio outside of the existing building, hence the need for the addition. Um, we had to eliminate some of those perimeter PTACs.
I saved those parts. They're on the combine.
Yes, that's for sure.
You'll have to get the architectural review to look at this?
At the appropriate time, yes, when we're allowed to go in.
Go in, be, well, I guess I'll ask the question. I heard at the last meeting, I, I, I listened to Chip Hasland and you, you all, um.
Just don't take the answer personal. That's all.
No, I don't think. I, what do you want us to do?
Well, how comfortable is everybody with this site plan?
Well, well, that's.
Is, is it parking? Is it, you know, how comfortable are you?
Well, I think we've given them what the main concerns are.
Yes.
And let's see what they come in. Uh, well, this is not a decision mode situation. This is just a, we tell them what our greatest concerns are. The parking, how many spaces, the flow of the parking, not too worried about the traffic because you're on a very heavily trafficked road. We already know that the incremental traffic will not be significant. Um, and you give them the feedback. That's all we're here to do is to give them the feedback on what you want to know so that you are able to evaluate the application when it is filed.
Right. I think the question was, um, it made sense for us to appear, Kevin did describe what his goal was to appear for ARC. Like I think it would be get their comments so that when we come back to you, um, and we do have to finish up with eight, with, uh, uh, in the wetlands, it's going to take another month or so. Come back to you, you have a sense of where, where ARC is coming. Say that based on the history of five eighty-one and how much we went through.
You know, I know, ARC just always, I, I, my guess, would you, you, you just go do what you need to do with ARC. I would say do what you need to do with ARC. This is another one, Nick, where I would suggest that they go first to ARC. Cause, uh, ARC has struggled in the past with Greenwich Office Park. Um, I basically have logistics.
Understanding, there, really, there is no significant site plan change here because we've already done it.
Right.
There is hardscape and landscape, but as Mr. Muller had pointed out, this is the transition between five eighty-one and the campus.
That's right.
Okay, we're not, the building isn't going to move, the addition isn't going to move. So there's really no change in site plan that we would be looking at that would reflect on whatever ARC looks at. So the landscape plan, uh, is very detailed and has a lot of lighting and all like.
Yes.
Issues that you need to resolve with this.
Yeah.
Um, so in this, in this particular case.
You're good with going to ARC.
I think that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Muller, Mr. Tessie can go to ARC concurrently with P and Z. Um, and.
And it's fricking Christmas with him this, this, tonight.
Yeah, but you called me grumpy yesterday, so I'm trying to be a good, you know.
I thought this was because it's the St. Patrick's Day.
Like, like I said at the beginning, I'm not Irish.
All right. So because my concerns are mainly logistical. Impact, impact on the flow and, and really the success of your residential site, impact on the flow. I don't think, you may have some driveway queuing problems when people leave because, you know, our experience with, you know how our experience with gyms makes us nervous. We'll give you the list of all the things that gave us, make us nervous, but I'm comfortable for you to go to ARC. The only thing I ask you before you to go to ARC is that you've already thought through the location and layout of the parking. So that, and you say to them, no, this is what's going to be needed to meet P and Z's requirements on parking.
Yes, we, we understood. We're tuned into that, you know, on.
I think, I think that's been resolved, you know, well, it, it's kind of, you're not adding new parking, not taking new parking. Right. You have the garage, you have the stuff on the, uh.
I know how this goes with ARC and they're going to go, so if you move the parking and you did this and you did that, and the answer is you're going to have to make it work so it works for the site, for your use on the site. I think here that's going to be very important.
I do, well, there's no place to move anything.
Yeah, I know. Okay.
Just saying, haven't seen their meetings.
Okay. Forward to the fun.
Okay, um, so we're okay with you going to ARC and you've got our questions. And does anybody from the public wish to speak on this proposal? You've got your colliers guys here from.
Yeah, case.
Yeah.
You wanted to get into it on a preliminary.
No.
Yeah.
I want you to have a chance to think it through and we're really supposed to stay on the big picture.
Well, it's good he's here. He's listening to you. So that helps. Thank you.
Yeah, and he knows all of our gym concerns. Okay.
And I think, Mr. Mr. Tessie, I think that idea of actually with colliers is to understand from the perimeter of, of, of Office Park, the driveway entrances up both sides, the new driveway entrance, I think actually looking at the access to this particular point would be important for us to understand. So if I was coming from offsite, how do I get to this, this, how do I get here?
Yeah, it's the allocation. One of the, one beauty, what, it makes sense because it's such a large site that, as you know, we, we have three different entrance, we will have three different entrance and exit.
Right.
We'll have two for a while, the, the mate, the, the two, but we're looking to hook up the other. Obviously, at some point, West Plutum, but yes, we can, we'll take that all into consideration, how they, how they choose to allocate, which we've talked about internally already, so.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everyone.
Bye now.
Um, I'm doing Tessie. Okay. No, I guess you're doing Tessie. All right. Before we go to the decision items, I'd like to take a moment and thank Victoria Goss. Because tonight is her last hearing.
What? What are we going to do without her?
I know. Will suffer. To tell you the truth, I haven't told you guys because Nick and I have been working on her to change her mind. We told her we'd give her a leave of absence. She could go to Paris for a few months and just come back.
Is that option on the table for everybody or is that just?
No, no.
To practice my French.
It's not, it's, it's not what it's cracked up to be. And I know you speak fluent French, but that, you know, you can do that elsewhere. Or you could do it, you know, with your cat.
Do it with me.
Yeah.
You're muted, Victoria.
Well, I, I think we can all take a few months and go to Paris together.
Hey, they got.
Wait, that's a whole different concept. You.
That's, that's perfectly fine. We can zoom from there. We don't mind.
Not how we get other commissioners, by the way. Like, it's not that.
Why not? The commission is going to be meeting in Paris. We'll see you there. So Victoria has served since June of two thousand sixteen. She has been with us for almost six years. Now, I didn't see why it couldn't be another six years. Victoria, you can still change your mind, okay? Your term's not over.
On it would be another fifteen years. It would be forever.
Okay, that's good.
That's good. We're good with that. We're, we're all good with, you know, we get along. We have the same somewhat dopey sense of humor, mostly.
Do you have a, a non-evil twin sister that we could bring aboard or what?
I have a lot of non-evil friends.
So you can change your mind. Your term doesn't expire until October. So you have time. I have not told Snack yet. I was like, I can get Victoria not to do this. We really don't want anybody else.
So are you, um, picking up and moving too?
No, I'm not moving. I, I'm just, I want, there's some things that I would like to do, uh, some projects that I have and they're in a slightly different, they're in a different directions and I just don't have time for them. So I just want to, I'm moving in a different direction. So then I, and I just can't do everything. So it's, it's just a matter of difficult choices.
Sounds like a good direction.
Yeah, well, I really enjoyed the commission. It's been wonderful and the commissioners, it's a great group and the staff.
You gotta lay off the drugs too, okay?
Well, you obviously don't appreciate the fact that misery loves company and, and that, you know, you, you're like, I mean, if, if I can call you a rat, your office not maybe quite sinking, but you're helping the sinking already with leaving and everything. So hopefully you'll reconsider.
I wouldn't, no, I reconsidered already and I, and I did that.
She's tried to quit like three times already and I'm like, no, you can't leave us. Um.
You know, you, you remember how Katie, it was important for Katie to share things with you? Um, now I, my battery's gone. This is, this is a bad time. Hold on.
Yeah. Right when you, when you're going to make fun of me, I love it.
No, no, no. Katie, Katie was making fun of you for not, no, you were making fun of Katie for not sharing things or I was making fun of Katie.
Yes, yes.
You haven't shared all this information that's been going on for months and, and.
Years. She's tried to quit like over and over again over the years and.
Not me.
Perhaps you spared us the anguish.
We let her, we let her go to Paris. We let her go on some trip. She's like, but I want to go on a trip. Go on a trip. It's fine. Just come back. So anyway, you can take a leave of absence. I think I found that somewhere, that you can take a leave of absence. So it's always an open thing to you. I, again, I haven't told Snack yet. Um, there you are.
Thank you for the invitation. I, I don't think so. I think I've made my mind.
And the other thing is, we think we're going to be able to have a party, right?
Oh, that would be fun. We love a party.
Yeah, party's a good fun. For starters, I'm trying to get John Conti to do the, um, ARC P and Z party because he offered it my house last year. And I'm like, oh, okay. So he's got an even nicer yard because he's a landscape architect. So, okay, I'm good with that. His doesn't have, we, we, so you're in for that one. I think he said he'd do it. We'll see. And then of course, we'd love to do something with you at dinner or something, um, and probably simplest if it was just us. Sorry, no spouses. Because just to not make the group too big for COVID, just in case we get, you know, we're not safe yet.
It's coming back and, and you know where it's more prevalent, uh, Victoria, right now.
Is this France?
Hong Kong.
No, no, it's, Europe is saying, we've been tracking Europe. I mean, I just saw a graph today about this and, uh, but we're lagging but tracking Europe. So hopefully you're not going to go over there too soon before you, you know.
Well, Bill Finger told us yesterday in a meeting that he went to his college reunion last weekend. And every single, they took off their masks for an hour and every single person is positive.
Where was this, at the Sorbonne? Where?
No, Bill Finger didn't go to the Sorbonne as far as I know.
Yeah.
You can ponder this and, uh, Israel, most vaccinated country in the world has probably the highest, uh, uh, positive rate. So I don't know if the, uh, vaccine is terribly effective.
Well, it.
Masks, masks are not effective at all. Masks are only effective if you get up about, but eighty or ninety percent.
Here, before we get involved in a political discussion, we're an apolitical organization, as it was explained to me, but, um.
Yeah, don't argue politics.
No, not, a lot of people.
Politics, that's, that's medicine.
Yeah, you, you missed, you missed what Peter says. The, the vaccine isn't meant to, to, to reduce the spread of it. It's meant to make sure you don't die. So how many people in Israel are still alive that have it? Probably a hell of a lot.
Right.
So, all right, you guys. So with that, Victoria, you're, you, you don't have to stay for decisions, although we're always happy to have your company, but that's why I wanted you to have the opportunity. And we still have, um, you're still coming to, we still have a couple of meetings. She's leaving officially on the twenty-second and I think we have a meeting before that of some kind.
We do have some sort of meeting before then.
We have two.
We have two meetings before then, right?
KPI.
The KPI, yep, and the signage. Yeah, okay. And you're giving us coffee, intravenous coffee. Mm-hmm. Deliver to your houses.
Horrible crack of dawn hour of nine o'clock.
It's actually nine thirty.
Oh, my God.
I know. Well, wait, wait, you can't have it both ways, Lo. You're the early bird goes to bed. You're supposed to be wide awake in the morning.
I, I, I'm awake all the time. Never mind.
Okay.
Well, awake, I mean.
All right. Okay. So with that, shall we make our decisions?
Yeah, imagine the participants that are still listening to this dribble. I mean, they haven't gotten there.
I had someone tell me that that was when they decided they actually liked the Planning and Zoning Commission when we get totally punchy at the end. We're like laughing and stuff. They said, but we decided you guys were human.
This is the, the outtakes and the bloopers from the meeting.
Right.
So we have three items, three decisions?
We did Forest Avenue steps. We did, uh, thirteen and seventeen Riverside.
We just have six, seven and eight.
Uh, Vineyard Lane, okay. Uh, forty-six Vineyard Lane, applicants feel busy. Uh, twenty twenty-one, I believe it is. Uh, no, twenty twenty-two, zero, zero, one. Very important number. Final site plan, special permit. Um, let's see, we've got zoning health, engineering, wetlands and conservation. Um, and this is for, uh, approval to construct a hundred and ninety-five square foot detached poolhouse and swimming pool, the result of which would further exceed a hundred fifty thousand cubic. and swimming pool, the result of which would further exceed 150,000 cubic feet in building area in the RA2 zone. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Uh, prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall revise the landscape plan in conjunction with conservation with, uh, at P and Z staff to reflect a two to one native tree replacement. Uh, P and Z staff is to review the selections uh, and native plantings in the rain garden. And I believe the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer and departmental issues.
It's not worth adding that they have to fix the broken inlet pipe on the septic, right?
It's, I think that's covered with the Health Department.
Yeah, Health Department's got comments.
Okeydokey. Uh, with that, do we have a second?
Second.
Who was that?
Second.
Oh, Mr. Levy was so soft. Okeydokey. So Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Levy?
Aye.
Lo?
Aye.
Wells?
Aye.
Albin is also aye. And with that, it passes five, nothing. And we go to number seven, which is 59 Moreland.
59 Moreland Road, application PLPZ 2021, 497, uh, final site plan, special permit. Applicant is seeking approval to construct a 303 square foot, uh, single car garage and relocate a 155 square foot greenhouse, lower the height of the chicken coop, the result of which would further exceed 150,000 cubic feet. And building volume in the RA4 zone, we have commission finds that zoning health, engineering, wetlands, and conservation all issued comments on the plan. Uh, therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Per conservation comments, uh, the applicant shall provide a two to one native replacement of any removed trees. Uh, per zoning comments, part of zoning permit, the applicant shall reduce the height of the chicken coop to less than three feet in height. I have a question about that particular one. Do we want to require an inspection? Or how do we want to know it's been reduced?
Joe, someone's gonna have to go inspect it, because Jody's got to check for zoning compliance, and it's on his zoning enforcement comments, that he, it will be done in the field, and he has, they have to comply with reducing the chicken coop height. It's already there.
So Mrs., Mrs. Doolook, Mr. Mr. Row, this is prior to zoning permit, so how do we, how would we go about doing that? Because I, I think it was kind of thing, we needed to have this thing lowered.
You're not gonna get a CO, Nick. It's like anything else. So that they'll, they'll get, they'll be required to get it as part of their permits, and they'll have to adjust it, and they'll, they won't get a, they won't get a zoning permit for, with any existing zoning, zoning violations. And then conversely, they won't get a CO if those violations arise or come back.
Okay, so this would be not prior to zoning permit, but prior to building permit, then?
Yeah, if it is, right. When it's an existing condition, it would have, the, the CEO would not issue new zoning orders without remedying the other ones.
Okay. Uh, and then, uh, part is zoning enforcement review, the, for building permit. That same app, the applicant shall indicate on the submitted zoning location survey, the relocation of the greenhouse to an area compliant with required setbacks. Uh, the applicant is to review the revised landscape plan with conservation, and the applicant shall address any and all remaining staffer and departmental issues.
Did you get all his trees?
Yes, I believe I did.
You get, Lo, are you happy with your trees?
I, I don't care about no trees. It's fine.
All right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has second. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Albin is also aye, and that passes five, nothing. And we go to Grace Elizabeth LLC at Three Louder.
Uh, Three Louder Way, application PLPZ 2021, 568, for final site plan, special permit. The applicant is seeking approval to construct a new single-family residence, dwelling, uh, single-family residence, pool, poolhouse, patio, driveway, the result of which would exceed 150,000 cubic feet in the, in value in the RA2 zone. The commission finds that zoning health, engineering, wetlands, and conservation of all issued comments to the plan. Therefore, motion to approve the application noting the following. Uh, prior to zoning permit, the applicant shall submit a construction staging plan. Trees removed as part of the project shall be replaced with native species at a one-to-one ratio, planted along the driveway for shade and to enhance the wetland buffer area. Okay, what do we do about the drainage? Where is he going to study that? Or what do we want them to do? The previous pavement, pavement.
Well.
I think we were talking about actually, were they gonna study it, or prior to permit, just to make sure that, to see if they can put the previous in?
Yeah, I think that was where we, we, we are best to leave it, because it didn't sound totally workable.
Okay. So the applicant, applicant will research or speak with Department of Public Works about permeable, permeable pavement.
I mean, it, they said it was possible, but it interfered. So let's see where they go with it. Let's give them the option. Do you guys agree with that, staff?
Yeah, I mean, I think that was sort of the thing, is it's not a requirement. You just would like them to do it. So I think you could just say the commission notes that as opposed to finds that, that notes that it would be great if you could do, if you could do it, but you know, because it's obviously an advantage environmentally.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, is that it?
Yep.
All righty, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Levy has seconded. Mr. McRae, how do you vote?
Aye.
Mr. Levy?
Aye.
Mr. Lo?
Aye.
Mr. Wells?
Aye.
Called him Lels. And Albin is also aye. And with that, it passes five, nothing. Um, we've got no discussion items, just to tell you quickly. However, the trust, the declaration of trust was passed last night by huge numbers by the, by the RTM. So we now officially have a trust. And now we are waiting to get people nominated for the board. Um, there's a couple of people where, where, um, we need to find ourselves, which is, we've got to have a resident of affordable housing. And, um, we are definitely, if anybody knows of someone, we are looking for someone who's good at fundraising. Katie, do we have any other updates? Oh, um, still working on the post road trees, and we'll see. We are probably gonna take that to the RTM in June uh, for their approval, because we have to do an indemnification. And also, just on the affordable housing plan, just so you know, we're hoping to circulate at least a rough draft to the commission. What do you figure, in a couple of weeks?
Yeah, yep.
Um, and then we'll need to have a public hearing. And that we're also hoping to take to the RTM in June. So it'll be a lot of fun and games in June while Victoria parties.
And then, just lastly, it looks very, very obvious, I think, at this point, that the special act business is gonna go through. So the outdoor dining will be handled by staff. So we, it doesn't appear that we need this meeting on the 24th. With the, with the question, I just need to look into, because several years ago, when this whole thing started, the way that the bill reads is that the commission has to make a finding that this is the direction you want to go in. So you did that um, a couple of years ago. And I'm just, I'm thinking, since the only change to the bill is that they change it from March 31st, 2022, to March 31st, 2023, or whatever the dates are, that we don't need to go back and have another hearing. Um, but I just want to double check that tomorrow. There is two little changes, which are totally appropriate, and I think very good that were in the bill from where, that were there last year, which is that they have to comply with state building code and ensure compliance with ADA. Um, so that's, that's big. Uh, because especially from the state building code standpoint, because I'm not sure that we're gonna be so lenient, but tense, number one, as a result. And, um, that will probably reduce the number of seats in some instances, because if you have, you know, you have to make sure you have the proper number of bathrooms.
Is that, that ADA compliance, is that in the node, or?
No, period. All over the place.
Both inside and outside.
Yeah, it has nothing, that they, the state bill doesn't know anything about nodes. They're just saying, whatever you're doing, you gotta be compliant.
Oh, that's gonna be a hoot. Because every single one of them, you know, you step off the curb. Right?
Yeah.
You step off the curb into the node, and then if you, if you don't have enough room to maneuver around all the tables, oops.
Right.
Oh, let's watch that.
Let me just see if it's, yeah, I mean, you would think that that would have to be the way it is, period. But let me just read and see if there's, if it says, I'll re, I'll, I'll, I'll look at that.
Sometimes what it, what ADA provides for is that if you have, if you have accessibility to something as inequal, if you would, okay, then that's your accessibility. So you may not be able to come through the front door, but if you can come through the back door, that, that's your ADA access.
Right.
So you may not be able to use the node, but you still have new seats in, in, uh, in restrooms inside.
Right. And then what I'm gonna ask them to is, they, it's a requirement, they've just submitted narrative. So I'm in the application narrative somewhere in there. I'm gonna throw in two questions, which is, how many employees do you have at your peak number of employees? And also, do you have, um, do you have a permit for any of your employees to park in the employee lots? It's just, you know, yeah, and if so, how many? I'm just kind of curious on, on those two things. And then we can ask them again, kind of at the end of the season. You know, we could develop a survey at the end of the season.
Right, okay. See how it works.
Yeah.
Oh, you're not changing, we're not changing the dates though, right? It's still, uh, able to November?
Yeah, so the commission, I mean, the, the Board of Selectment wants, wants the commission to look at the change of the, change of date. Um, so we can do that at our, at our next meeting, if you want.
Well, do you want to do it on the 29th? Because we could, I mean, just.
We can't do it on the 24th, because we need a legally notice for that. You know, there wasn't enough time from the 10th to the, to the, to the 24th. But we can do it for the 29th. We'll just throw, throw it in there.
Okay. Well, we may not meet on the, do we even have to meet on the 24th if staff is gonna?
It doesn't appear so. But this isn't 100% final yet. So this is just, I'm just, you know, reading between the lines. It looks pretty darn obvious that this thing is going forward, but it hasn't actually happened yet.
All right. And you just never know. So we'll stay tuned.
I'm, I'm so feeling positive about it is that, um, every single comment that was submitted was in favor of it, with the exception of two comments, which said state building code and ADA, and both of those are put into new language. So I mean, I can't see why this wouldn't go forward. But again, like you said, you never know.
I agree. A different subject on the energy rag. I know you're trying to set up a meeting with the EMAC folks. Did they get back and about their availability at all?
No, I just, with that, I told them we talked, remember yesterday, um, who was gone when we asked this? Nick, you had jumped out. So, um, so what we asked, I asked everybody if the commission would be interested in having a briefing from EMAC on all the background with us proposing this, uh, narrative that we're gonna, that we've got a regulation that we're drafting a text amendment for, that an energy narrative come in with applications. And, um, we asked if they would be willing on a Monday afternoon at 1:00 p.m., that a non-briefing Monday, if they would be, I don't, you know, sort of energy 101, like where, where people are going, what things are being considered. And in part, we're addressing the concerns that you guys raised about, this is a different way of thinking about energy in the application process and in the flow. And I was gonna talk to them next Monday, and then pick a Monday where we could have this session on a Monday afternoon at 1:00. And we were just gonna hold it open for anybody who's interested, but we are the primary target that we know where we're headed, and everybody's comfortable.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, in terms of material, you know, there's that letter that's being put together by Alison Wash and Laura De Bonaventure for Fred Camillo, which sort of gives a summary on what you just said in terms of how we want to approach applications. So that might be good background info.
So, and it just gets everybody comfortable, because if we're gonna start seeing narratives, I think we have to have an idea of what we should, what we're even looking at. I mean, we have to educate ourselves. It's gonna be another area of zoning and to consider.
Totally support. I can't do it on the 4th, but other than that.
Okay, well, um, soon as I've talked to them next week, I'll send you guys some, some possible dates. There's no rush. Um, but we'd like to get it done, just because I myself don't understand a lot about this yet. Uh, I'll be honest, I've sat at the meetings, and I still, I still have a lot of questions too. Arn, however, has become an expert.
Yeah.
Bob Baralek is on, uh, affordable housing, let's say that.
No, no pressure there, Arn. We're, we're gonna be leaning heavily on you.
Well, then that's okay. I mean, we lean on everybody. Um, also, okay, so as long as we're talking, I had a thought on where we could go with the HO regulations, not to cut back on the incentive. No, Lo, come back.
Oh, boy, sorry.
This is gonna work for you. Um, not to cut back on the incentive, but to add language around keeping the, the setting of the neighborhood. And then, you know, all that, you know, when we did, uh, Coffee for Good? When we did Coffee for Good, how Dennis was saying that you had to preserve the landscape and the site, not just the structure.
Right, you had to, not just the single building, but the whole setting.
So if we beef up that language in the rag and leave the incentives, we may be able to kill two birds with one stone. Get the historic buildings conserved, get the setting conserved, and satisfy the neighbors. Now, we have to wait till litigation is over, but just throwing that out is something to think about.
So like a site, not, not, not a facade thing, but a site thing?
Consider the whole setting in your HO. And then HDC would also be opining on the entire setting, because one of the things that's always bothered Dennis is that a lot of times it's so focused on the structure. But if we focused on the entire site, then we might have, we might be better able to address some of the concerns that come up with applications. So just throwing that out there.
Yeah, one, one of the underlying.
Katie, I haven't tried this out on you, so I'm waiting to see. Okay.
And, and I, I'm being, I'm, I'm trying to walk on eggshells, because I know Katie's listening and, and watching. But, um, one, one of, one of the issues is that you get so focused on saving a single structure that suddenly you open up a can of worms such that, that the structure runs the risk of being compromised by other things that we've allowed, such as other structures, to compromise that, that, that standing structure. Anyway, I, I, I'm, I'm with you.
So, so we keep, we make HTC happy, we keep the bonus, but we make it work in neighborhoods. I think we could get there. And we just have thicker language. And, you know, sometimes we just need more specific language on which to hang our hats. And we've learned enough about what can come up. I mean, Coffee for Good's a perfect example, because it's, I mean, it's a success story.
I think you could also say, because I, I think everyone might feel this way, I'm not sure, but, um, that I think we should, let me just put it this way. I think we should discuss when you have a historic structure of clear value, but you can't see it from the road. Um, and, you know, I, I personally still think that is extremely valuable. It is still something that is noteworthy and worthy saving. But I do think we should discuss, including some rules that say you have to, you know, anything else that you're gonna do per that section also should not be visible from the road, or something along those lines. You know what I mean? Like, should be behind the property, or I don't know, except we discuss some more qualifiers, in other words.
Right, so that, so the historic building at the front of the property, it would have to be behind the built, front building wall, like, I think, system, yeah, okay.
So I'm, and, and, you know, I'm, we're gonna make Peter Low the expert on.
What a mistake this is.
I was dying to say that.
He recognized it so early, too.
I know. I loved it when he ducked under the table.
No, no. Peter, just, let's just say that HO, HO regulations are not boring.
Yeah, that's right. Uh, but let's just say that right now, the reigning expert is our, um, is our planning director, and she's on staff. She gets paid the big dollars, and we will defer to her ultimately, or even initially, both.
Of course. But we can do some legwork and some thinking to save Katie some trouble. And then she comes in and she cleans us, cleans up what we've worked on. That, it's a great process. Of course, but we can do some legwork and some thinking to save Katie some trouble, and then she comes in, and she cleans us, cleans up what we've worked on. That, it's a great process.
What we're gonna be doing is gonna cause her some trouble. We know that.
Yeah, it always does. We always make trouble, and then she cleans it up.
It's just a matter of getting the direction from everybody, you know, as to what, what's desirable or whatever.
It's just, if we can give Katie an idea, then she works it into her degrees in planning that are smarter than we are.
Right, we've seen plenty of examples that where our HOs are compromised by other things that don't seem to be within our control. So we're gonna, we're gonna redouble our efforts to make sure that the environment that these HOs are in, uh, is consistent with the idea of something that's historic. The siding, um, the height, the setbacks, materials, whatever.
Exactly.
Right.
And you can become an expert, too. Okay, you guys, let's like, go see if we can go do something fun tonight. Victoria, we'll see you at the party.
Hi, Victoria.
Wait a minute, we're gonna see you on Thursday, right?
Yeah, we'll see you at Thursday, too, but, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye. You can always change your minds.